I'm gonna call the meeting to order. The first thing on our agenda would be a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Okay, first off, you see in front of you a Chromebook. This has been a project that David has been trying to get off the board or off the ground for a while to get us to transition from paper copies of everything if he can help it. So we figured that this would be a good trial run since it was just our informal work session give us an opportunity to play with it, so.
They are touchscreen, so you can just hit the links on there. And long term, you will have your own device and working with IT to get you your own device, so you can be logged into everything and use it for your board work at home as well.
Can I just leave it here?
Yes.
Yeah, you could just leave.
He knows me. I should have left my time.
I'll dedicate one of the cabinets in the office to Kim's little cabinet.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, well, let's make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, second?
I will second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agendas, there any discussion? Hearing none, is there any opposition? We've adopted the agenda. Okay, now we're going to dismiss to executive session pursuant to ORS 192660H to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Okay. Okay. Team building. What if scenarios, you have scenarios in front of you? I'm going to let David present this. This is something you got at the administrative.
I got the idea and then my friend ChatGPT with the help of OSBA and Oregon Law helped me produce a few different scenarios that might come up, so there are three different scenarios. What I thought, what I thought we could do is split into, board members could split into teams to one team of three. Each take on a scenario and try to answer the questions that it asks about those scenarios. And then I have a key of best practices that we'll go over after. So I thought we could take five to 10 minutes, go through the scenario, come up with what we think the best best method to handle that scenario is, share that with the group and then we'll go through best practices and see if we agree.
Does that sound good?
Sure.
Okay. Do you guys want to be pair number one and do scenario number one?
Sure.
Okay. You three want to do number two?
Sure thing. We'll do number three.
Whatever you want to call them each.
No, just one each, I think, will be fine, then we'll gather.
Well, that's this week.
Number two.
Oh!
I did have that.
The controversial.
Yeah.
Oh, this is just that one. Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so we can.
Okay.
And China goes over.
Yeah. I think we should. If this one just seems. By their parents. That it's a state law. I think we should meet. People. Explain why.
So it says first, how would you handle it? Here. Social media.
And send the pressure to a meeting. And not. But. On the election. And their appearance concerns. For working with.
Yeah. I was reading. Basically. Yeah. I absolutely. But I think we should send out with presidential. Team. Respond to any of these events. Every issue affects. Or the personnel. And that all. Yeah. You can't make it. Illegal.
I don't have to be sure. Agree with you and.
It's strong.
I have this through. Yeah, yeah, went back there. Work on some projects. My dad said they moved here with. My dad, we had a school, but. I heard family. Investigation. It's getting greener the last three years. The climate has changed.
And I think.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. There's.
Recognition.
I mean, a lot of it.
And then I.
Pace look.
Yes.
If they're claiming that. Yeah, it's weird. Just enough water to grow, but.
And that's where they have a wonderful policy. International peace chart. Let's get.
Yeah, there's big waves. Some people feel alright, I think. I was so supportive.
Right there. And then they say, as you guys say.
Yeah. Right.
So. You know. But it's beautiful.
No, I didn't that instantly get done, but I would.
Well, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah, it's really.
And that's where you can have.
And it's more, yeah, it's green then?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're like. The bottom.
What's the nearest place?
Dickinson is thirty miles north, so it's thirty miles south. It's weird though, you see oil pumps going and then you see windmill and like. It was just a write-off.
Except the wind is pulling a lot of rock down.
Yeah, so the wind is put into the grid and it smokes electricity.
Oh, it's just for electricity, it's not really pulling water.
No. Yeah, no, so these are big, these are big, that's right, they could be like apartments. So we did the investigation. Whether they thought it was.
From here to. The next year.
Yeah.
And you're driving by.
Yeah, pull up the side of you, look up at it. Yeah. So the farmers though, they get paid pretty good to have a longer land.
We think another three minutes is sufficient?
Do we need?
Just a minute. Yes.
Yes.
Couple more minutes.
What are you gonna do?
Table, it'll work out. I make rest. It worked out.
I can see that.
I, I. Yeah. Yeah.
But there's one that has been. I think she's a.
So while we're all waiting.
You have stored two. You have. Went out there. Process. They were six months. That's a turn hand up. I actually said they're in Charles. This is our. This is our. So they got down to Charles to know. And just make a.
Yeah, it should be on the shelf.
Yes. No, they didn't get into the camper, they didn't get into the SUV. And then just go. Because it's.
I couldn't do. Yeah. Jerry could do three months. It's like. Like the time.
Yeah. Only bed, only shower.
That's right. You know, and not him. Something that's about. That's why it is. Two tables put together.
Yeah. And I think once you put a person on leave and you solve the problem, that person does anything outside of that. We have a school. You know, we had. The special. So we had, we teach the smart here. On the. The guy, somebody said they. Investigation is now very. Easy. Even if there's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, you have to get. And if you want the side, look at.
Yeah. And then I, and then I say, no, we told her.
And I did my job. You know, I need more. First, that's why I'm right after. Say, when we put on the agenda, please come and sign in. You know, with ours. We don't have to have any. Give them a little time to. Yeah, maybe have.
Yeah.
Yeah. TSPC doesn't have enough people. Because we've changed. Nobody will. This would necessarily. And it would be frustrating. One of the things was bounce backs. And it.
Hey, are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Have a little report out.
You want us to go?
Number one.
Want to read it?
Yeah. So the situation number one, unexpected financial crisis. You are a board member, a few weeks into the new fiscal year, the district chief financial officer resigns unexpectedly. An internal audit reveals a $2 million deficit due to mismanagement of grant funds and overspending on a new technology initiative. The local news station gets wind of the story and wants a comment from the board president immediately. So then the role-playing questions that we're focused on tell the three categories, the first be internal communication, how do board members communicate with each other, like the interim superintendent? I think our big takeaway from this one was that we follow public meeting laws, so we don't want to predispose discussion or preempt any board decisions with our comments, so you know. The idea here being that we beam the emergency meeting, we follow public meeting laws in terms of its announcements. Then we will end up going into the executive session probably like we just did to consult with counsel about what happened and where we go from here, but we don't want to get out each individually saying things about the what happened that will be picked up and reported in the news for us to argue about later.
We're gonna lean on our experts because they're gonna know. And that goes into, I think, the external communication as well. These ask for our board chair to comment, so you're gonna go through the procedures of what we learned about it outlined on speaking to the press.
Which would be no comment at this time.
Yep. Exactly. So it's not our, it's not your job to speak on behalf of the board.
Without the board having.
Yes.
But is a question as a new board member, is it okay to to say things along the lines of of? We are aware of the situation. We will be meeting soon to discuss it or or is really, you know, or?
No, I think that I think that's fine.
I actually.
You know, the board is addressing it. It's meeting on.
You have the answer key over there. I feel like I handed you the answer key.
Oh, SBA really himself.
My first year who said, you know, no comment is not necessarily best answer. And that is actually a really good answer. So, yeah, he came up with that.
Yes.
Really, really good for us to say, you know, we're aware.
And we 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 talked a little bit about, you know. That's all, you know, well and good. We live in a small community. We're recognizable people. Um, you're you're gonna get, you you could get pigeonholed with Fred Meyer on your Saturday morning grocery run like.
Oh, you will.
And other doctors will come up to you and the nurses and everybody's gonna ask you.
Well, my 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 favorite is that when I go out in public, uh, I put on a baseball cap and take off my glasses and most people think that I'm related to Dr. Radoski.
Superman.
It's that Mark Kent. That's how I that's how I try to be. But the um. We we talked about that, you know, you really, you still have to follow that, those principles of not. Putting words in the board's mouth or not trying to. Uh, placate somebody by giving them information that they don't need to know. It really is, we're meeting, this is serious. I agree. It's it's. It's a bad situation, but we're gonna work on it. As a board. Uh, and then our three, uh, the the last thing was the decision making. One of the first three steps a board takes to address the financial crisis, uh, we said, number one, listen to our experts. The we have a. We have attorneys. We have the people who did the audit. We have superintendent. We have people that. Uh, can help us fully understand the situation. So the first thing would be to listen to those folks. Um, second thing we said was sort of prioritize the liabilities. You know, that $2 million seems like a really big number, but it's gonna be split up into multiple different liabilities to multiple different. Entities. And so we need to. Like, yeah, possible, but it it may not be simply just $2 million to some company. It's gonna be, at least in this case, split up between different grant funds and a new new tech initiative. And so, uh, and then, um, you know, finally, what do I?
Um, let's see, the third one was. I don't know.
And we we talked, we talked, uh, sort of prioritizing the core mission.
Yeah, so basically, yeah.
If we if we do.
The other and then um consulting with each other and our. Board committee, our budget committee and everyone else to kind of roll everything out. And we talked about also, um. You know, we need to get a leader in to our financial department because they're gonna be, you know. Without anyone, so we we're gonna need to hire someone immediately or have attempt come in to help them get situated. And there's gonna be a lot of meetings. Attorneys, the auditors and everything else. To make sure the district stays on track. And then I think there was a question about budget cuts.
Yeah, that's a sort of prior priority.
Prioritizing.
Prioritizing the 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 core function, the core function of the district. Sometimes putting things you wanted to do now, you're gonna put off till later so that you can prioritize that the students or professors.
Yeah, and then just staying within our role as the board. There's a lot of things we're gonna wanna do. And we don't necessarily do. We direct and we, you know, and we have our one employee that we say, you know, hey, how's this going? There he's gonna report back to us and we're gonna, we're gonna have oversight over that fiscal liability. So just to make sure we stay on track. And we got an A plus.
You guys did great. I don't feel like I really need to read the answer key because.
Read what it says.
Oh, my gosh, really? The whole thing?
Oh, no, is it long?
Yes.
It's a little.
It's as long as the scenario. And I gotta say, we. I saw that it said role play. We did not role play it.
That's okay.
Yeah, we did.
I can I can ask. I should. I should have come in as a reporter. Now tell me.
I think there we go.
Make it fun.
Okay, number two.
We told the superintendent that send out an email to all of those emails saying, get over it and throw us.
Be the keyboard warrior on Facebook.
But seriously, Diana, I'll tell you what we thought.
What was the scenario for?
You do part and then I'll depart. So.
Diane, will you go over the scenario really quick?
Yes, I'll read the scenario. Scenario two, a popular and highly successful high school principal is under investigation for a series of anonymous complaints alleging verbal harassment and favoritism. These complaints are now public. The principal's supporters have started a social media campaign defending him. While others are demanding his immediate dismissal. The superintendent has recommended a leave of absence with pay while the investigation proceeds. Role playing focus. So the first thing was navigating public pressure. How do board members respond to angry emails and social media posts? What is the official stance on the investigation and how do you communicate it? And we kind of discussed. Filing through the chair and. Yeah, and the superintendent. So. That was kind of our thoughts as far as the angry emails, making sure that those are in the appropriate hands. Obviously, we're not going to be going on our social media. Um, pirate or campaign or uh even defending the district at all on social media or anything like that. And I think we also talked about. Having a general statement kind of along the same thing like. We're aware. We do have a. Who's a Facebook page where statements and things can be put out. So I think we did. Talk about like. Having a general statement.
Yeah, that would be our official stance would be written in. Counsel and whoever else needed to help with that so that it didn't. Uh, it expressed concern over the situation but didn't imply anything and that we were unable to. Do anything until the investigation was over and that everybody would have a copy of that and would be instructed, if you get an email. Right, put this text or whatever it is in the email and forward it to the superintendent's office. So everyone's following the same protocol. Um, for forwarding communication and not responding to anything.
Go be smart.
I guess one thing that we didn't talk about very much that I now that you read it out and I could hear. Is that they were anonymous. Generally, I don't like to do anything with anonymous.
Yeah.
Uh, but but as soon as it became a public thing where it's other public, then I think we needed to take action. And so I agree that. We as individual board members should never say anything in those situations. It's really the appropriate for the superintendent and or our PR people to make those kinds of comments. And then what was the second part?
The second part was, did we support the superintendent's recommendation? And we said, if that recommendation was already made public, yes. If it was not, we would make sure to talk about it in executive session to to understand that, you know, to Arnie's good point. The welfare of the children has to come first regardless. But then also, you know, when you do this, when someone is given a leave of absence, even with pay, it's pretty damaging. For them. So we kind of talked about that a little bit and how difficult that is to navigate.
Can I ask two two questions real quick? One, um. Uh, you had mentioned that, uh, when you receive emails from. People out outside of the district, uh, with complaints or comments. That they're that they continually get forwarded. That our practice as a board.
Yes.
Generally speaking.
And they get.
And as as we're told repeatedly. As individuals, we have no power at all. We are only a board. That's the only time we have any function. So answering for the board is something I would never do. So it's always forwarded. So. Some one person has all the information they need. And generally, we send it to the superintendent. They talk for the.
Oh, I send mine to the chair and the chair usually goes through superintendent, but even.
We can send it to both.
Chair. Either way, it's gonna end up in his.
Yes.
Okay. And just so I know what to do with emails in the future.
Yeah, you can send them to me just and then I'll forward it or you can just send it to Gary and then he normally will contact me and say, this is out there in the. Echo sphere.
Um, I was just gonna say, historically, when I was first on the board, there would be like, maybe you would get a complaint, right? So now you have that. And then Addie has that. And then I'm in a meeting and I have no idea that those complaints are happening. So I don't know. We've discussed this before. So not that I need to know every single complaint there is, but sometimes making sure that we also have that information.
It's his job.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, he needs to do in his summary. He will say, here's what's, you know, on the cruser to let us know. Uh, what's going on. And I I had some issues with that before because there were things that went out and I only get a little portion of the story. I would have no idea that I'd be approached. So the thing is no surprises for the board members. You don't want to be surprised. So he kind of gives us the need to know information that we would need to know.
Never hurts to have shared language either. Like, you know, the sentence that we use is, thank you for your concern. Please know that I am.
Yeah.
I have noted your information and passing it to the appropriate. Design me, whatever.
My same question was just, uh, in in medicine, we have this thing. So, um. You mentioned that a leave of absence even with pay is damaging someone's career. Uh, in medicine, um. If you have your privileges in a hospital suspended revoked, but but you have to report that for the rest of your life.
Yeah.
To every other job. Is is are is there certain similar requirements for leave of absences through?
No, I think I think really mostly that you're asked, have you been fired?
Yeah, okay. Ever been asked to, ever been asked to resign or. Leave a contract before it's there's.
Yeah. Is there a question about have charges been filed against you?
Usually there's a charges question.
The um, the the thing that changed out a few years back, I've been at long ago now, was that there was a bill passed whose name was, you can't pass uh, pass the trash. Because too many people. Even though there was a complaint and they were doing an investigation, they left. They resigned and went to a new school district. And the legislature got very uptight about that, thinking. Because ten times down the road, the guy finds out that all these other things happened before and nobody knew about it because they didn't pass it. So now if there's an in progress going deal, school districts have to be much better with respect to reporting that and not letting people not know. So, I mean. The old thing is to be, if you ask for a recommendation, just say. Nothing.
Yes.
You're not supposed to respond anymore to those recommendations.
That happened in history in the medical community as well. Doctor switches.
Right.
Oh, a lot of patients are dying. So then they just go practice somewhere else. So.
That's why they call practice.
Yeah.
Last one, maintaining a due process. How does um this involve? What we were saying, especially what I think what was just said. We have an executive session and during that executive session, we would like our council and our people to explain exactly the process we're gonna go through. If it includes. Um, leave with pay or whatever. What are those processes? Whether what's the investigation, just doing the investigation, all that kind of stuff. We need to know. But even under extreme pressure, we don't say anything individually to them and we go through the due process laws that they tell us we have to.
All policies. We have policy on.
Yeah. And we have to know all this stuff in order to make decisions.
Right. Yeah, we do need to know this stuff.
Yeah, whatever. I mean, we have policies for the whole complaints. We have timelines, timeframe, everything, how quickly to respond.
A big important thing is follow your own policies.
That's right.
Yeah. But sometimes they supersede other other policies and they'll.
Both stars. You guys did great.
Yeah. Oh, we're getting stars.
Okay, number three. All review. The student led protest. How with students from one of your high schools stayed to walk out to protest a new district policy. That limits their ability to use cell phones during school hours. Protest gains traction. And a large group of students is now outside the district office demanding a meeting with the board. Local media and parents are on the scene and the situation is becoming chaotic. De-escalation. How does the board as a body decide to respond to the students and do you engage with them directly and if so, how?
Well, like Arnie was saying is, uh, we blame it on somebody else.
Then with a five sack, you know, we found the problem and can hear him out. He wasn't in our group, but I know he would say that.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so what me and I were going over was that, uh, we would hear him out in ways of like a community group or at a cafeteria or auditorium.
Yeah, we think there should be a big public hearing. Um, where you invite parents, students, everything to come in and explain to them. All at one time and possibly have some experts there to give information about the effects of cell phones. So that parents actually understand why it's being instituted. While all at the same time stressing that it is a state policy and we have no. Flexibility on imposing it.
Question. Is that, would that be like, are you saying like a?
It's like a big uproar.
But like a like a assembly kind of thing, like gathering. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't be organizing that, correct?
Yeah, we could. We could do a listening session.
We would do, we would probably have our.
Well, yes.
They'd organize it, but it wouldn't be necessarily a board. Function because we'd have to operate under our board meeting laws, meaning that they would get two minutes. And and so are we talking about like an actual, if it's under the auspices of being a board. We would have to do it a certain way.
Uh, if if there a difference between a board holding a hearing and a board holding a meeting?
We'd have to do public notice because anytime a board gets together.
But you'd still need to follow procedures.
Wouldn't it be the chair and the superintendent standing next to each other? With the superintendent doing the talking with the support, the board chair standing there. And then the superintendent would organize, we are going to organize a listening session. It will be facilitated by X, Y, Z. Whoever that is. And this is how it's gonna work and we invite you all to come.
Well, then the board would be invited.
The board would be invited.
It's not, we're not putting that on.
Right, we're we're.
The board would be. Just like the other's listening sessions.
The board would be standing next to the superintendent and indicating, yes, we agree.
Yeah.
You know. Not saying anything, but being.
Called by the district, not by the board.
Yes.
Right.
That's my.
But we feel it's important to allow everyone to sit down at the same time and hear the same message.
I agree with that. I mean, I I will tell you that. As a principal. I would try to solve this at the principal level, not at the board level. And so I would choose to have a meeting and have kids and parents come and have a meeting.
As if we had the school.
At the school.
If that if my middle school and elementary schools don't really care about this and the policy's going fine, why invade all of them? Um, one of the first things I did when I was dean of students. Back in the seventies and eighties, which high school is a rankus, rankus place. They took fifty gallon barrel of oil and poured it down 10th street. So not 10th, but um, the street Ingersoll. So that they could rev their tires up and, you know, police officers would not come on campus. Um, because it was so out of control. It was an amazing place and I, they couldn't find the dean of students. I was a math teacher. I said, I'll take that. That sounds like fun. So I get there and all of a sudden this stuff is happening and. Our parking lot in the middle, which is where the pirate hall is now, was the parking lot. And there were kids getting run over and turning drugs. It was just crazy. So I just decided, superintendent. And the principal and the principal were gone. So I was in charge. So I closed the parking lot and people just went crazy. And I said, that's fine. We'll work it out. These are the reasons kids need to be protected. We're not gonna have. And it was. All the teachers got behind it. It was, I had Brason and Jaeger. Brason said, we're gonna bring my tow trucks up and clear it out and we're gonna let the kids park there again. I said, that's fine. Because we have other people take, who have bigger trucks, don't take your trucks away. I just. We got to be really good friends eventually, but.
See, this is why I'm here.
It blew up. It blew up into a big deal for a while, but. The superintendent and the principal to there, they didn't want to be a part of it. So they let me intend to handle it. And we eventually got it and everybody said, well, that was probably the right thing to do. That was not a healthy. That was not a healthy place and it was not a healthy place. And eventually we got the school back under control and police officers would actually come on campus. It was crazy, I could not believe how out of control it was when I first stepped over. It was, the kids were running everything, it was horrible. But it, you had to get firm, you had to do some stuff and it took, parents got upset, "My kid should have a right to do that, da, da, da."
To burn rubber in a parking lot?
That was all in the public street.
They burned out on public street. Now they're all seventy and eighty and they're doing the same thing.
Yeah, it's true.
Okay, we're gonna keep going.
They were, yeah. I, I just, I mean, I think that this is, what you guys said is the right thing to do, as if it's a public thing, but, um, I would hope that other people would take care of that and have the meeting with kids and have those conversations. Um, and I think that's kind of what's happened.
Yeah.
I really do, I, I did like what you said about, uh, engaging an expert in that listening.
Yeah.
Yeah, like having an outside facilitator handle it.
Yeah.
Also, like, honor the students' voices. If some, if kids should, we should encourage kids to go ask them.
See, that's why I want to listen.
And to exercise their First Amendment rights and, and.
Not by phone.
Yeah.
Totally. So.
Okay, so how do you handle the pressure to immediately revert to policy that was recently put into place?
I don't think you can do that.
You don't?
Yeah, see, we're, in this particular instance, that's impossible.
Right, well, it is not impossible even now. Because the law doesn't take effect till January.
That's true.
So we could be forced to, you know, if you wanted to break under the pressure.
We shouldn't call it a law either, it's an executive order, right?
It's an executive order.
It was, it was a bill.
It was a bill that didn't pass.
And then she made it into.
That she made an executive.
I don't think it's a law. Still think those are considered laws.
From our perspective, it's a law. Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay, so that's, it's still, executive orders count as laws.
Yes, they do. I, I spent some time on that one.
Well, I'm just making sure the policy matches that. Whatever.
You guys are, you guys are already working on that, right?
Are you guys in play?
I mean, because we already had that already in place, pretty much, it just need to be shored up.
You mean the cell phone problem?
Yeah.
And I was totally proved that we, we never start something in the middle of the year unless you want it to blow up. So not, not starting it until January, that's not intelligent.
I think you, we're probably, not to get it too far public, but we're gonna hear a lot. I'm already getting phone calls that teachers are calling the same policies to the students and we're holding students to a higher level of accountability than we are the staff, the staff. And, and while staffs are, they are adults and, but yeah, so you're probably already.
But that's, yeah, you've heard us.
But, and the other thing was that, you know, a, a staff member on their phone very well might be communicating with another staff member in the same building for totally legitimate reasons. Just because they're on their phone doesn't mean that they're not attending the district business.
I think that's pretty.
That, that's been the, the communication message to the administrators, the administrators to the staff is the only time you should be on your cell phone is when it's a student safety issue or something.
Student safety issue, I get.
Right, but those happen a lot.
Yeah, especially, especially the, the K six, although we've, we've really gone to radios a lot and coded radio messages at the K six level to try to not have those phones in place.
Yeah, because those are their personal cell phones, correct? Or are we providing cell phones for all of the staff?
I would, without knowing a hundred percent, I would say they're personal cell phones. There may be a district payment.
So if, if, if we're not providing cell phones or stifling for them to use their cell phones, I mean, I don't know, people have gotten so used to having that instant communication and gratification that they don't remember a day where you had to kind of say, yell out to the teacher next door, you know, or if you've got a radio, you know, you can use radio. I think that they should set an example. I mean.
One of the dish, one of the downsides of a radio though, so just, yeah, for students who are having a crisis, picking up a radio and saying, "You're having a crisis," doesn't make you feel any better than sometimes a silent form of communication.
Well, isn't that coded, like you said?
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of it is, "I need a walk and talk room." That's one of the, "I need a walk and talk room."
I mean, but the kid knows that, what that means. After, like, the second time it happens, everyone knows what that means, right?
Well, hopefully it's not happening very much at all. I mean, if, if you're needing the radio, in my mind, you have a pretty serious situation going on.
They're happening quite a bit.
Are they?
Yeah, we, we.
But this, this, uh, topic of, of the cell phones is on Mondays for Jenny.
And Sarah, thank you.
I just also, I just also know that I think staff completely overuse their cell phones.
I agree.
That's my experience.
I hundred percent agree.
Way too much.
Students, staff, I would say most people.
Bad on cell phones.
I grounded.
I apologize for getting out to use my cell phone. My ninety-seven-year-old father is in the hospital.
She thanks me for taking her cell phone.
Oh, peace.
She thanked me, she said, "Thank you, I got the most work done that I've ever gotten done."
So I, I thought my grandkids were gonna have a neighbor, but they go to the summer camp up in San Juan. No, for me.
Like, we're at the risk.
Yeah, so to the end, our question thing, I clearly said you'd get it on the agenda at our next regular script work meeting and then let them know, "Hey, there's a public comment section, come sign up." That way you're not like the problem solver and.
But I think one of the things we also said was that the message to the public should be, "We, we've heard your complaints, we understand your complaints, your concerns, and we will work with the legislature or whatever body we can to help fine tune those rules so that it better fits the needs of the students."
Well, yeah, we may not, I get what you're saying, though, that we're listening to them. We might not be able to change things.
No, we may not, but we understand and.
We, we hear you. I think that's what, and I love that they were out there, I love that scenario because they had passion about it. And I love that the students, even if it was kids.
And it wasn't parents, that's what I liked. It wasn't parents all standing out in front of the thing. Okay, I hope everyone found this helpful.
Yeah, thank you, David, and thank you, Abby.
Yeah, it's good to talk us through these things and hear what people think and believe.
Well, it just gives you a, a not, a, an opportunity to look at something that's going to happen.
Yeah, you got it.
Okay. Uh, now we're on to superintendent updates, but why don't we take a five-minute break for everybody? We've been here an hour.
Yeah, look at that clock this phone right now, so. It does this every day.
I love that.
Take it a five-minute break.
We're back in session.
Back in.
And Gary, you're up.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, wanna talk for a little bit this morning uh, about, um, kind of the last thirty-ish days and how things are going. Um, hopefully that'll help steer the conversation when it comes to uh, superintendent goals for the year and some of the priorities for the district. So I'm gonna dive right in and, and, uh, there's time for questions. But by all means, if you have something that's a little improved, just, just hear me out. Are you, well, I thought that I could take notes at the same time. Nope. There we go. All right, so, uh, overview agenda for this, for this morning, I just want to talk about the progress to date, uh, some strategic priorities, uh, some current challenges that we're facing, uh, kind of the direction to hopefully go moving forward and then give chance for some feedback and some questions. And we'll start with progress today, we're gonna talk about the listening sessions that I've had so far, we'll get some data. So I have had listening sessions so far in my thirty days, uh, with five students. Those, those five students have been, those that have stopped and talked to me about various things, whether it's the personal electronic device, which my favorite conversation was with a, uh, current sixth grader over in North Cullum. And he, um, gave me a whole, uh, list of reasons and then I said, "You know what? You should write a letter to the governor."
Yes.
And, um, he said, "I'm gonna go do that." So, uh, I had five students, I met with thirty-five different staff members, actually more than thirty-five, but at least thirty-five that I can, that I tally. Uh, six parents and then numerous community members to gather, uh, some broad perspectives. Um, really ask people about positives, areas that we can improve, uh, you know, how resources, how they feel about our resource allocation and then, and then support systems for our stakeholders. Yes, Addie?
I'm gonna interrupt. David, is there a way that I can see that on my computer?
If you trying to think of how to get you.
Do I have to log in to be able to?
If you log into your Gmail, I can send it to it.
Uh, no, no, no.
I could certainly send that when we're done.
No, but in the future?
In the future, you'll have your own device which will be logged into your Gmail and you'll have, uh, you'll have this.
Okay.
And likely, what will happen is you'll actually log into the meeting on your, so you can do that. You can log into the meeting and it'd be closer to you. Um, so if you go.
Okay, I just wondered, that, I mean, I don't need to do it now, but in the future, I would like to be able to see that.
Yes, I, I tried to bring up the meeting, but you have to have a Gmail. All right, uh, so key themes, key themes that have come out of these discussions is, uh, student-wise, student voice, uh, and the personal electronic device ban. Uh, for staff, professional development needs for PLCs, uh, feedback, uh, and evaluation. Staff feel like maybe when they're being evaluated, they don't feel like they're getting the most concrete and, um, best feedback all the time. Uh, supporting programs such as OBOP, speech and debate, TAP, and the ARC, uh, Talented and Gifted and Accelerated Learning. Uh, advanced placement was a, a big topic of conversation with the high school staff. Um, and, uh, a theme that I had for many staff members was a desire to focus on improvement through positive communication from the superintendent. And I said, "Okay." And, um, I, I'll make that a focus to, to make sure that I'm, I'm continuing to be positive as we work to improve uh, items within our school district. From parents, heard about supporting OBOP. Uh, we're involved in books for those of you that are, that aren't aware of what OBOP stands for. Uh, uh, TAG, and then more opportunities for CTE, uh, STEM, and, uh, and I heard about even the desire to have some sort of after-school program for kids in our community. And my discussions with community members, uh, connections to the city, um, working with our local tribes, uh, mentor, or excuse me, connections with, uh, SWAC in the, uh, colleges. And then, um, I, I, I sat in my chamber at a conference meeting and, uh, got some feedback. Their feedback was all very, very positive, especially around the high school and the work that they've done with, uh, job and career fairs and trying to get, uh, kids a track after graduation, one of our three, you know, one of our three Es having a plan. So, uh, really positive feedback sessions I've had with, with those folks. Okay, I wanna talk about some data from twenty-four, twenty-five. Some of you have seen this data if you were in my opening, if you saw my opening remarks to the district uh, staff or if you had a chance to sit down with me. But our national DIBELS proficiency, DIBELS is an assessment that's taken by our K-two students, uh, for, um, uh, reading proficiency. Uh, at the, the national average, fifty-eight percent of students, uh, that take the DIBELS exam, uh, K-two, are proficient. KUSBAY schools were at fifty-three percent. Uh, when we first started, Amplify, two years ago, we were at twenty-three percent. So quite a jump in the three years that we've implemented Amplify, I'm gonna talk about that here in a second too as well. Um, here is our DIBELS history in KUSBAY schools. Uh, twenty-two, twenty-three was the first year that we had the DIBELS assessment, and these are for our K-six students. So in twenty-two, twenty-three, the beginning of the year, which is the BOE assessment, uh, we had, uh, thirty-four percent of our students were proficient in reading, forty-eight. we had 34% of our students were proficient in reading, 48% were well below benchmark, well below grade level, and then 18% were just below grade level. That was our first year that we took the DIBELS assessments. That had been September of 2022. When we took the end of the year assessment in June of 25, you can see we're at 54% of our students are proficient at the K6 level, 16% nearing proficient, and then 29% are well below. Those 29, well, the 29% and the 16%, those are the students that are getting tier two and tier three interventions right now. I'm trying to get them up to benchmark. But you can see since the implementation of DIBELS, we've made some good jumps. And then I added, you know, you always, when you take a beginning of the year assessment for the very first time, you can kind of say, well, kids that haven't taken the assessment, staff haven't given the assessments. There's probably a margin of error in there. So I included our 2223 end of the year assessment, just so you can see that even at the end of 2223, we still had quite a few kids that were below benchmark and our blues and greens were were not what they are today. So you can see we have had some great growth in our DIBELS assessments at the K6 level in the three years that we've had Amplify as our core ELA curriculum.
And why is the end of year on the third grade, students down at the bottom more than the beginning?
The one at the bottom, that one is, I want to take the cohort of students that have, our only cohort that have had DIBELS for three years. So when you look at 2223 end of the year, that was their kindergarten, end of year kindergarten. Now these are incoming third grade. So the 2223 end of the year, that was their Kinder assessment. The 2425 end of the year, that was second grade. So this is our only cohort that has had all three years of Amplify as a curriculum. And I wanted to show that when they took the end of the year kindergarten, we had 32% that were proficient. And now at the end of second grade, we're at 50%.
I was reading it backwards.
No, I understand. It's how it's how DIBELS produces report.
And and DIBELS is an individualized test, one teacher, one student.
Yes.
And it's a pretty intense kind of testing.
It is. It is. It's time.
And it's, yeah, and it's fine. And the ability of the teacher to do it is really important. So I think over time the teachers get better.
Absolutely. Teachers get better and students also get better because they start understanding it's a minute. It consists of reading words at the at the kindergarten level to where you start reading passages when you get into that second, third grade level. And there's also a vocabulary comprehension.
And that's consonance, words.
Yes. Yeah.
And remind me, what does DIBELS stand for?
Oh, it's a University of Oregon acronym. I, to be honest with you right now, I don't have that. I can get it for you though. But it's a, it's a U of O acronym for their standardized individual baseline, something, something.
Situation model.
Yeah. So I'll get that information for you here. We always call, we just call it our M-class assessment because in Amplify, it's called M-class, but it's it correlates with the DIBELS, the national DIBELS.
A parent asked me that actually last weekend. It's like, I know it's U of O.
It's dynamic indicators of basic early literacy.
She's checking it out.
Yeah. The Gators of Basements.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where do our, where do, so our incoming kindergarten typically, are they mostly, are they, are they mostly still this 52% severely below grade? Or are half and more students entering kindergartens severely below the kindergarten standard?
Well, they're not kindergarten yet.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah. But when they take the the beginning of the year assessment as kinders, this is generally pretty consistent. I think it's, I think it's become a little better as we've had preschool, but it's still generally in this neighborhood.
And so the and is that also similar to the national trend or be an outlier where the students who enter Coos Bay schools are starting further behind the most?
I'll look at, because I'm not sure. It was really kind of difficult to find the national proficiency for DIBELS. And I tried to find the K6 national proficiency and it doesn't exist. So that, let me ask, I have some connections at the University of Oregon, because the University of Oregon developed the DIBELS assessment. And let me, let me email the University of Oregon. I could find some information on them.
Well, and again, I'm going to say, we don't need four-year-olds to have learned what they need to learn in kindergarten.
That's true.
It's true. The but for example, as a person with connections to the local pediatricians, if a if a community-wide focus on early literacy would help our students read when they read and be at grade level in kindergarten. Or, you know, and that's why I'm asking, are we actually, is this normal or should our students, are students starting the race behind?
Well, again, I would, I would, I would say from my experience that we have to be very careful about the word behind. Because child development is, is what child development is. And when you rush and hurry children to do things that they're not ready to do in any of the domains, then you're causing problems in other domains. So
I'm socially and emotionally ready to sit on a carpet for five minutes.
I'd rather, I'd rather have a child who is got some self-esteem and some, you know, and wants to learn, is excited about school, can't yet spell their name, come to kindergarten.
100%.
Than a child who, you know, is anxious, afraid, stressed, all of those other things. So
100%.
When we, I just will, I will hear me say this probably a lot in my time here, that we have to be super careful that we're not pushing children because we think they need to enter kindergarten already having learned what what we think they're supposed to learn in kindergarten.
Right.
Or what our society thinks they need to learn.
That being said, however, there are fewer opportunities in this community for strong preschool education than there might be in Portland or some of the larger communities that have more money and can support programs.
Yes, that's absolutely true. If the preschools that we have are quality.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm saying.
If they're not, then we're doing a disservice to those children.
Yeah. We've been, when Dr. Anzner was doing a lot of research last year in Steubenville, for for those on the board last year that heard about Steubenville, Ohio and their community, similar to ours in terms of poverty demographics. And but yet they lead the state of Ohio and they're starting to be recognized nationally for their reading and math scores among students. They talk about they have universal pre-K and one of their big focuses in their pre-K is just students to be able to speak and express themselves. And not focused as much.
And play.
Yeah. And not focused as much on the, on the reading skills as much as the expressive and the ability to speak and communicate.
And giving a look at.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. Right. So. So that's where, that's where definitions of what that quality is become important and important to happen.
Jumping ahead to our pre-ACT English course for the eighth and ninth grade.
Can I just interrupt one more time? Maybe, and Derek especially, if you have any questions about the acronyms that are being thrown out, please ask, because I was overwhelmed when I first joined the board and had no idea what any of these things were. And we just keep talking about them as if everyone understands.
When you're doing it, if you just kind of, if you know.
Some of them, yes.
I don't know anymore.
Exactly.
Or just explain what it is.
Yeah. The SAT and the pre and the ACT are the two standardized tests that are generally used to show college readiness. We have shifted more to the ACT as a lot of schools and institutions seem to be doing. And our students are taking the pre-ACT in eighth, ninth. And then we are working on some 10th grade students taking the ACT, pre-ACT, and then our 11th, all of our 11th graders and 12th graders this year are going to take the ACT or the ASVAB. When we, we were going to call it the day of testing in October, October 15. Our, this is new for Coos Bay schools last year. We've had students that have taken them, but in the past, but we, this is, it's new for us covering the cost and making it like a school district initiative and a high school initiative and at the junior high level. So last year.
Do kids take the pre-SAT? I mean, the SAT has some big scholarship programs. The ACT does not.
No, we still have students that take the SAT, but we cover the cost for students to take the ACT as a district.
And the pre-SAT, if you don't take it, you can't get them into the scholarship program in the SAT.
Yeah, I'm assuming we have students that are taking that as well. I just, we don't cover that as a district.
Okay.
I can check with Eli on that. I know we've had a bunch of conversations about the ACT. Many states are starting to look at the ACT as their standardized state test. Alabama has the ACT as their state test for all grade levels. So our pre-ACT scores last year, eighth and ninth graders nationally, 72% of students were proficient in English. In Coos Bay schools, we're at 54%. And Kim, I, when I get to KPIs later, I did get some historical data for you, like we talked about. SABSS diagnostic. SABSS is our math curriculum that we adopted last year and we adopted at the K8 level. Sorry, this is so small, but if I can emphasize something to you, is red is not good and green is, green and blue is good. So if you can't read the numbers, look at the colors. Keep in mind kind of that grain of salt. Last year when we took the beginning of your assessment, which is the top red for the K5 and the top red for the 68. It's the first time we've ever given the assessment to students. It's a computer assessment, so it was not teacher-driven. But it was the first time the students had ever taken it. So you're going to tend to have more reds than you would green if it was just, it's the first time. But we had, at the beginning of the year assessment last year, we had 66% of our students that were in the red at the K5 level. And we had 65% of our students that were red at the 68 level. SABSS has a really great online component called Success Maker. It is, it is differentiated, so it's at the student's ability level. So if you're a student that needs interventions, it will go down to your grade level to provide the intervention. If it is, if you're an accelerated student, then it will accelerate you. And so after the assessment is taken and students go in Success Maker for seven hours, it then places them where they feel they should be. And then students are on it an hour a week, 16 minutes a week on Success Maker outside of the core curriculum, working in Success Maker, doing whatever level activity. Some of it is gamified. So and kids, for the most part, I think really enjoy it. You're always going to have some outliers that did not like it. I have one daughter that thought it was fine and the other one that wanted no part of it.
Can they change groups?
It will automatically adjust as you advance. It's, and it produces really nice reports. I did, last year I did monthly reports and monthly recognition assemblies for the kids that made the most growth in Success Maker. We'd celebrate them, have them come down and get a certificate. And it produced really nice reports. I can go in and say, who's made the most gains in third grade this month? And there you go. It will also tell you how much time they've spent, their correct answers percentage, how many times they had to go into the glossary to get assistance. Like it's, it's a really robust, pretty solid program. My reason for talking about Success Maker is, as you can tell, by the end of the year, we've cut our reds in half at the, at the K5 level, down to 33, 33%. And our greens and blues grew at the K5 level. At the sixth, eighth, sixth through eighth grade level, we did shrink our reds by about 23% and our greens and blues improved. I think obvious as you're, you know, sixth through eighth grade level, you're talking about more advanced math and it's harder to catch kids up when they aren't, aren't behind at that level. But we we felt like last year math-wise was a pretty big, pretty good success and unofficially we do have, I want to say we'll get to here in a while, I think it's about 5% growth on our state assessments in math. It's still not a great number. The state math number's not a great number, nor is Coos Bay schools, but we did grow. I think it's by about 5%. We're going to get to here in a few slides. Algebra one enrollment for our eighth graders. The state average is 24% of students in the eighth grade are enrolled in algebra one or higher. This year in Coos Bay schools, we're going to be at 25%. So we're going to be above the state average to start the school year. We were at 7% last year, as you'll see in a slide later. So we made quite a bit of growth in that, yeah, in that avenue. Our advanced placement qualifying scores. At the state, 22% of students who take the advanced placement, 22% of public school students who take the advanced placement test or assessment have a qualifying score. Last year at Marshfield High School, Coos Bay Schools, Marshfield Destinations, 40% of our students that took the assessment.
And the qualifying score is a three?
The qualifying score is a three. And a big, I think a big component of that, obviously, teachers did a great job of getting students prepared. Students did it, but we took away the students having to pay for the assessment and we paid for the assessment. So I think we took away the gate, the gatekeeping that Dr. Anzner talked about. We eliminated that and made everybody eligible to take the assessment. That, that was in an.
Do we know how many, what percentage of our kids take an AP?
Yes. Yeah, I think I have it in the slide coming up.
Okay.
It might be if we don't, I have it in the email from Floyd. I want to say it's 34%.
That's impressive.
I want to say that. Yeah.
Really great.
I know that.
How long have we been collecting that data?
Not very long. You're going to see a lot of data when we come up. It's data that we haven't been collecting in the past and we're starting to it. We're starting to do it.
Do we have any national averages on the past, this slide and the previous slide?
I do not have national average for these, but I can, I can go look for national averages.
I bet we're going to see even a higher jump of kiddos taking the AP. It was such a push. I think for good reasons. And I think we'll see more kiddos taking.
Every sophomore.
Yeah, every sophomore. Yeah. So there you go. Yeah.
Yeah.
On an AP seminar.
And we have plans, we have plans that to look at a pre-AP class for ninth graders, for all ninth graders. And I think, you know, when people talk about the anxiety and fear of AP, I think if we can get kids into those AP classes and build some confidence early, we're going to see more kids taking those AP classes as they hit their junior and senior year. I think there's that. I mean, I know we're being recorded, but my daughter has that stigma of like, it's AP, it's AP, I can't do AP, I'm not an AP kid. And I think if we can get them in and eliminate that anxiety and stigma, it's just going to, it's going to explode, explode our kids in the.
And the kids need to know too, like, not that this is what we're going for, but they can pass the class without passing the, the AP. So like, getting them in there and used to that environment is also good. Because the class does not necessarily pass the, the AP qualifying score, which ideally it would, we would want them to, but we could
You're right.
build confidence that way.
Advanced placement enrollment for this year is nationally, 35% of high school students are taking an advanced placement class. In Coos Bay schools this year, we're going to be at 44%. Big jump is the sophomore, the sophomore AP seminar, but we still, even without AP seminar, we were going to be, I think, above that 35% because last year, like I said, we were at 30, 34%. So we're, we're, we're doing real well.
What is the content of the AP seminar?
AP seminar is a big focus. I'm trying to get this right because we've been talking about that pre-AP for ninth grade. There's two different focuses. Research and writing are the, I think, the two biggest components.
The AP seminar, what's that? Part of the English.
Yes, it's part of the English. Yeah.
And can we get those separated out? From the sophomore?
Yeah. If we took the sophomores out, what would we have? Yeah.
I think also they're offering freshmen an AP environmental science.
They are. We add AP environmental science for freshmen.
So I think that is also an option that kiddos are excited about.
How full are these classes?
Well, that in lies, obviously the sophomore is all of entertainment. So it's real. And but that in lies some of the things that we're going to have to get creative about that I've already talked with Eli. I'll talk a little bit later and you're aware that we're going to hit some budget situations at the end of this year. A couple of our classes, we, Eli and his staff have done a great job in, you know, back in August, it was, I believe we had about, and I could be off by a couple of kids here, but it was roughly about eight or nine kids that were in AP psych. And they went and made a push and I think they got that up into, you know, mid double digits, you know, 15.
Nice.
But those are those things we're going to have to talk about is, you know, we want these AP classes, we're committed to AP classes, but how can we justify what we're doing with classes of, you know, eight and nine? We have to get those numbers up. And I'm hoping breaking that stigma of AP will start getting those numbers up. We're getting creative in how we, how we have these classes. Because that is a fear of mine as we get into some of our spring budgets. We need to, you know, what are our priorities and how do we favor them? And staff them.
And do we, is it, is there the alternative of like, if SWAC has a, you know, psych class that they can take versus the AP, is that something that is a possibility? Would that be a cost saving?
Or are there, are there online? Or are there, are there online programs, you know, where kids all call into a center thing and you have a class online, basically?
But it's not gonna be as enriched as.
Yeah, that, that's the big, we, we can offer some AP classes through ingenuity to the high school students. But having that everyday staff, you know, connection, enrichment piece of it, those are the, those are the concerns of that kind of a model of offering a bunch of APs online. Students still have the option to do it now if they would like, but, you know, we want to.
And do we have programs that are very full?
Yes, I don't know if I could name one offhand, but yeah, we have, I, I think our AP environmental science classes have good numbers. And then AP environmental science is really a good, in talking with Eli, it's, it's a really great opening kind of AP class for kids at the high school level. It's, provides really, really excellent rigor. But it should be a good kind of dipping your foot into AP for our students at, at the high school. And, and I had to get back to your question about SWAC. Certainly, we have some classes that are dual credit, but they not, they're not, they don't, you can't take a dual credit necessarily and then also take the AP. You might get some, but not at all. So we have to, you know, be selective.
But maybe it could be an alternative, like if you can do AP psych, but yes, SWAC offers this and you'll get a credit and.
Yeah. The hard part is probably getting back to work, all those things create issues.
Yeah.
Yeah, more, more barriers for kids.
Yeah, and if you're a student who is really set on going into the university system, you know, some of the dual credits don't.
Don't interest.
Don't always transfer. All right, strategic priorities. I wanna talk about our key performance indicators for the next three years. These are key, these are KPIs that were developed in the spring with Dr. Ainsworth and the admin team. And certainly, we've made a couple of slight adjustments, but we've, we've kept them pretty much as, as drawn up. Our key performance indicators at the elementary level, ninety percent regular attenders is a goal by the end of 2028. That's a state standard that ODE shoots for and is on, and is on a report card. Regular attender is students that attend ninety percent or more of the school year. So basically, they have to miss less than eighteen days to be a regular attender. Which I know eighteen days sounds like a lot, but as you can see, we're at sixty-five percent in 2023 and sixty-six percent of our students in 2024. So we have a lot, a big abundance of our students that are not regular attenders are in that seventy-nine to eighty-nine range. Where they're, they're, they're sitting in that kind of regular.
And that's across all grades?
Across all grades. Oh, no, 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 this is just at the elementary level, I'm sorry. This, this one up here is the elementary.
Is this excused or not excused?
Any absentee.
And it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Whether doctors are paying for it or you're sick for a couple of days a month.
Or you take a vacation.
Or you don't have to.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's two days, two days.
My kids are probably not regular.
Yeah, and this, this is going to be on our, this will be on the new accountability measure from the governor's. K two attendance is going to be on the accountability measure.
Just got words after COVID.
Yes.
I'm sure.
When I started at Milaco, in my first year, we were at seventy-five percent regular attenders. And then immediately coming out of COVID, we were in the forty percent. Now that, also take that with a grain of salt, because those were the times where if we had a student that tested positive, we had to quarantine that, the class. And so we were sending kids home at times.
Right.
Who, and they were healthy. And so you really can't look at the numbers immediately coming out of COVID.
Yeah.
But the last two years, you can see we're at sixty-five and sixty-six, and we're kind of slowly creeping our way back. We have seen, I received a report from ODE yesterday that our elementary schools are back to, our K twos were back to seventy percent. Amelia Ed somehow got contacted by ODE and said, are you okay if we talk about Eastside and, and State Blitz? And I was like, yeah, absolutely, any, any, great. Publicity for Coos Bay schools, but apparently we were back to seventy percent. It hasn't been that, no, those numbers haven't been really officially released yet. So we are, we are climbing our way back to, to where we need to be. But the state is expecting our students to be at ninety percent regular attendance.
Have we evaluated that data to see what, what is keeping? I mean, is it vacations, is it illness?
It's really a mixture.
So no concrete?
There's no concrete, you know, swaying one way or the other. We did, we've done some things at the elementary level to try to celebrate classes with perfect attendance, celebrate students monthly and weekly with, that are, that are having positive attendance. And I think those initiatives are making gains. It's really, I think, if we can really focus on working with those kids that are in that seventy-nine to eighty-nine percent regular attendance, we can jump that number. Because again, the student, when you're not a regular attender, when you're below ninety, that's a huge chunk of students that are sitting in that eight, seventy-nine, eighty-nine percent. And then in a day or two, can make all the difference.
Oh, yeah. I remember back in the day, I used to send my kids, they'd be snot-nosed. I'd be like, get on the bus.
And I think we have, I think we have, we're starting to have families that are starting to get back to the like, are you not feeling well or are you ill? You know, and if you're, you know, you're not gonna feel great every day, we gotta get you to school or.
Is that clear or snot, or is it rain?
I think parents got used to having kids with one.
Yeah.
They did.
So they didn't get, they didn't push like they used to.
Yeah.
Well, and also, I was just wondering what work or what, you said working with the students, but if they're elementary students, how much, they don't have that much, you know?
Control.
Power, control over what's happening. I'm wondering about working with families.
Yeah, we have attendance advocates that, that reach out to families. We have, our admin team and teachers, we always encourage phone communications when it comes to attendance early on. Plus using Parents Square now was for mine for communication. And then we do have admin team, our admin team at the elementary level, they have attendance meetings with families and attendance advocates. We try to work with families whenever we can to try to figure out what the root cause is and, and get these kids back to school.
One of the things I liked at Eastside last year is that there would be positive callouts, you know, hey, you've had grade attendance this week or this month. And so not just when there's crisis, that was really nice.
Uh, reading proficiency, seventy percent of our students will be proficient in reading as in math by 2028. You can see our, our OSAS, twenty-eight percent in 2023, 24, twenty-four, twenty-five, completely unofficial. This is me trying to crunch the numbers on my own. So I wanna, they're not officially released until October. So I'm kind of trying to do the math on, on my own. And I think we're gonna be around thirty-two percent.
And what is OSAS?
The Oregon, Oregon, it's not Oregon system, it's.
Oregon State.
Oregon State Assessment System, thank you. Uh, Oregon State Assessment System, OSAS. And dibbles wise, we were fifty-two percent in twenty-three, twenty-four, fifty-two percent, twenty-four, twenty-five, we're fifty-four percent. So we are seeing growth. We're not seeing the big jumps like we did early on with Amplify, but we're seeing conditional, conditional incremental, incremental growth. Uh, math-wise, on the state assessment, twenty-two percent in twenty-three, twenty-four. I think we're gonna be around twenty-six percent. So four percent, I think, is where we're gonna kind of fall into at the elementary profile. For our new board members, the students that take the OSAS are third, fourth, fifth, sixth graders. So K twos do not take the OSAS. Uh, SABSS, we didn't have it in twenty-three, twenty-four, so there's no scores. And then by the end of the year, forty-one percent of our elementary kids were at benchmark. So as you can see in all of our assessments, we have a ways to go to get to seventy percent. That's gonna be a theme as we go through all of our slides.
What does SABSS stand for? I'm just kidding.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's not an acronym, it's just the name of the program. Ours is called Envision, I know that. At the K eight level, we use Envision, it's our branch of SABSS. And then a KPI that we are, we have hit and we are actually improving our amount of minutes per week is in music. Uh, last year, a hundred percent of our students had music. This year, a hundred percent of our students at the three, six level have music and their music time was up. So they're getting extra music sessions per week anyway. Yes. And we're starting to see, two years ago, we implemented sixth grade band at the, back at Milaco and Sunset, and, and we implemented choir. And we're starting to see those numbers now translated to the junior high.
We had a full M out there.
Full M last night. We said that, we said we had a full M, we haven't had a full M in a while.
It's been a while.
With the band. So we're starting to see John Cruz, Brett Aker done a fantastic job with our, with our music program. And we're starting to see that grassroots growth now getting up into the high school. So we're really excited about that. Uh, junior high, you can see ninety percent attendance again. You see, we actually went down four percent last year. In talking with, with Mr. Montiel, Mr. Ardal, and asking, you know, is, was there a correlation, was there more sickness? They felt like there was a little more sickness last year, especially around January, February. We had kind of a rough cold flu season. And they felt like that it was a, especially with, with one of the cohorts of students, one of the grade levels was especially, the attendance was especially poor last year. Passing rate, ninety percent of the student, ninety percent passing rate for our students at the junior high, passing their classes. Last, uh, two years ago, we were eighty-four, last year we were eighty-eight percent. Also, I constructed those numbers along with the junior high principals. So we were, there's a lot of paper, a lot of, you know, sketching and writing. So I put a little asterisk by those that we could be plus or minus a few percentage points there, but. Uh, reading proficiency, state assessment, thirty-six percent in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four for reading, thirty-seven percent last year, again, estimate. Pre-ACT, we did not take it in twenty-three, twenty-four, but thirty-three percent were proficient in twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, looking at math, you can see in, on the state assessment, twenty percent, and then we went twenty-one percent. And then pre-ACT didn't take it twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four and fourteen percent in twenty-four, twenty-five. We have a lot of work to do math-wise, but as a state, we have a lot, we have a lot of work to do as a state, reading and math and science-wise. So we're, and then science assessment, state test, twenty-five percent in twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, twenty-one percent in twenty-four, twenty-five. And then you can see our pre-ACT, we're at fourteen percent. Uh, Algebra one enrollment, fifty percent is our goal. Like I said, we're at twenty-five percent this year. But you look historically, we were eight percent in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then seven percent in twenty-four, twenty-five. So there's that big jump that I talked about. And I'm really happy to say we have, we are now up to twelve students from Milaco and Sunset that are bussing over to take math at the junior high for the last period of the day, which is up from zero two years ago. We did do this prior to COVID with our seventh graders before we reconfigured the school district, but we hadn't done it since we came back, since we reconfigured and came back from COVID. So I'm really happy that we have those twelve kids being bussed over for that last period of the day. And hearing from some of those kids, because I know a few of them, they were pretty, pretty nervous that first couple of days, but now they're kind of settled and then they're enjoying it, so. And then a hundred percent of students enrolled in co-curriculars at the junior high. We have no past to add on this. I have a survey that's going to be sent out to students in their advisory class for both the junior high and the high school to get data on what co-curriculars are involved in. And I consider a co-curricular, in my eyes, it's anything that gets them connected to a positive adult and a positive peer group. So I look at 4H, the Pacific School of Dance, the Boys and Girls Club, the Boom Dance Studio over at the mall, Little League, CSYS, anything that gets them involved, again, with a connected adult and a curriculum.
Don't use the fitness.
No. So that, so that survey is gonna go on the next couple of weeks, the kids will do it in their advisory. I have a whole list. All they have to do is put their name, their grade, and then they just have to hit checkmarks on the Google survey of what they participated in. We can get some data on that. And the goal is with, with, with that survey, is then we can take the kids that, I don't have anything checked off. And it's like, okay, what do you like? What are you into? Oh, I'm into, I really like to dance. Okay, well, we've got these couple of opportunities, like how could we get you involved? How could we reach out to you to get you involved? Oh, I really like to play soccer. So, okay, well, you know, this and that. By the way, I gave your number to Chad Scriven about a kiddo that.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay, okay, great, okay. So, um, you know, again, there's that situation. I really have a kid that wants to play soccer. How do I get involved? Oh, well, this is who you go to. So getting connections built is the goal.
Are you, are you guys looking at, you and I kind of talked about this, but barriers for kids? Because a lot of these things take money.
Yeah.
So I was one of those kiddos that, you know, I didn't have money when I was in school to be able to, I mean, the summer school or pants is so expensive. And unless you have somebody like you, you know, hey, we're gonna pay for this for you. How do we get through those barriers for those kids?
We're looking with some of the, we'll work with some of those organizations. I know I've worked with a couple in the past and they've been really receptive to, I have this student in Milaco that really wants to do this and, and can't pay for it. You have scholarship programs and you're like, let's get him over here, we'll get him, we'll give him a sign of papers and we'll take care of it.
And is that something that foundation can help with?
Depends, I, I would say that's probably not in their list.
It's pretty low amounts.
Yeah, but I will tell you that, that as a high school principal, it's unbelievable how much resource is out there if you ask. So we had no student who would come and tell us that they had a dental problem, that we couldn't get free dental. All the dentists in there were willing to take a few people on. I mean, some of them go off to Africa and everything else to do dental work. And they said, why wouldn't we do that at home? So, and, and that, just about everything. Kiwanis took kids on shopping sprees to get them both before school. Rotary, all of those groups have resources that, and if they knew what the problem was, they'd pay it.
It's just getting the.
It's just getting the connection.
Getting the connection, knowing who they are and then figuring out how to get the resources. And almost all of them don't want any acknowledgement at all. They just wanna make sure the kids get what they need.
Yeah, so.
With the co-curriculars, I was curious too, because I worry about the foster kids in our school system.
You should worry about us kids always.
Yeah.
Well, always, but just in my experience, almost none of them have the opportunity because sometimes they're going from house to house for limited transportation or something like that. And we know the statistics on foster kids, so I think that would be really important to know as well.
Is sports listed as one of those co-curriculars?
Yes, I have, and I have them individually listed.
I, I, I think that I agree with you and getting them engaged in those activities is really important.
Yeah.
Again, that takes support from the foster parents, that's not always there.
Yeah, yeah, but then how do we, how do we help?
Well, Linda Torres in the past has been really good about trying to help out with, when I contacted her and said, this, this youth, who's McKendy Venta would really like to be involved in something. She's like.
She's been trying to organize a, a parent, foster parent group for a long time. I know Lehman's worked on that for years and I don't know if they have one or not.
A foster parent group, they do.
They do?
Very active.
So it's good to get a hold of that group and let them know that we have resources, we want our kids engaged in that group.
Is that group through, is that like something to Coos Bay or is that like the?
You can get in touch with Greg Dalton, who's head of CASA, because he's the liaison to the parent group.
All right, jumping ahead to high school. Um, you can see at the high school level, also an attendance drop last year. High school level attendance is obviously different than elementary level attendance. And where at the elementary level, it's, it's quite a bit parent-driven. Uh, at the high school level, it becomes quite a bit student-driven. And the senior attendance, the last couple of years especially, has been really down. And so we're working with putting together a little more rigor. And we're hopeful with more rigor in the classroom and the more expectations, getting more kids involved in those AP classes and things of that nature, that will help with some of the attendance of students that, you know, I, I can kind of miss a day and still be all right here and there. Because it adds up. I know, I had a past story where I met with a family and I told them, this is before I came here, this was when I was in college, so I can tell the story, I won't say who. But I told them, I said, you know, your child's missed in twenty-two days. And dad who went to work early was like, oh, okay. And then a couple, about two minutes later, really, the light bulb went off and he looked and he said, wait a minute, that's a month. And I said, yes, sir. That's a month. And he couldn't get over like, that's a month of school miss. And if you add that up over time, when you've got these students that start in kindergarten that are chronically absent and work their way up our system, by the time they get to high school, they missed, you know, well upwards, could be up to a year at school. So.
But see, that highlights a problem to me, and I know it's primarily student-driven attendance at the high school. But a lot of that is parent influence.
It can be. I know, I, when I was insurance officer at, at College Grove, we had several times where I would, I would meet with families and meet with parents and they were really doing their best, the parents and the students just, I'm not gonna.
But I mean that man, to know that his kid's out twenty, so I don't know how we do it, but we need to educate high school parents about the need for their kids to come to school.
We call them every day.
Yeah. Yeah, there, there's calls, we have attendance advocates, and we're working with families, I think. Um, I think we're gonna, I think several of our high school students, again, like, like Carney talked about, they're still in that kind of COVID, like, ah, you know, they, they were, they were at home.
And that's parents too.
But I mean, and even in my, you know, my practice, which runs very much like a small business, getting nineteen and twenty-year-old medical assistants who will show up to work every day.
Yeah, well, that's.
But it's, but it's the same, no, it's not a different issue. It's the same thing that's come out of COVID, is that it's, it's more common for people to miss things now.
Yeah.
And that to be normal, and I think, um, I really like what, um, Mil- uh, Millicoma's done, uh, over the past, where they, they celebrated regular attendance. I think the more positive messaging and building those habits at, at early ages, this is not a problem that's gonna go away rapidly, but I do think that sort of incremental approach where we celebrate good attendance, where we celebrate, uh, those things, and then have the systems like we talked about for the truancy officer, kind of the phone calls, all that stuff, but it's a big, big problem we have to tackle even a couple of ways.
The other issue that can make the, my feeling, the biggest difference at high school level, if kids really believe the teacher wants them there, if they really feel like the teacher cares about them, if the teacher really listens to them, they're more likely to be there. Um, we had a lot of individual classes where kids have perfect attendance, and I, and we're thinking, no, they're never here. And they said, well, they have perfect attendance in my class. Um, and a lot of those happen in CTE classes, other kinds of programs, but when a personal relationship between a teacher and a kid is the single, in my opinion, biggest indicator of high school attendance. It's getting all teachers to take that on. Uh, we have a science teacher, Oxerson, that would always pick the kid who he knew was not gonna come to school to make sure every day he touched base with that kid, and they don't feel like he was really happy that he came to the science class. Whether he learned anything or not, it didn't matter to him. He just wanted to make sure the kid knew, I want you in that classroom. And kids showed up. I just wanna.
And so when I, 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 when I was in South Lane, um, I know I was the, the dean of students, we did a student survey at the high school level, and the question was, why do you come to school and why do you not come to school, essentially? And we overwhelmingly heard the three reasons kids come to school is connection to a teacher. And that connection could be, I can't miss, miss that class because if I miss it, I'm way behind, so I have to be there. Connection to peer group, and I have to be there because I'm doing band or, or a sport or an activity, and attendance is a basis for participation.
Yep.
Those were by far the three, and connection to an adult came up over and over again about I, why do I miss a class? Why don't like the teacher? The teacher doesn't like me.
Yep.
Uh, versus why do you go to this, you know, go to all your classes, or what, you know, when you, you know, and you, you hear that over and over again.
And I think those will be repeated if you were to do it, you know, here.
Well, I think we're going, we're going to do it here. Those are, those are some of the, we're gonna get some student voice things going this year to hear about kids that are, that are in our buildings and how they're feeling, besides just the, the seed survey, which is at a state.
There are kids at school, at high schools, and I'm not saying a peer. No one even knows they know.
Yeah.
And they feel like no one knows they're there, and no one cares that they're there.
Well, I, I just want to say, I worry, I love the ideas of, of all the celebration and making it positive, but I also worry for younger children, who again, have no control. Um, and if the teacher knows that that one child has prevented the whole class from.
It needs to be celebrated.
Yeah. Um, you know, it just can, and the child knows. I'm the one who didn't let us have a pizza party because mom, the card is broken, I couldn't get to school or whatever. I worry about the flip side.
Well, I worry about the, I worry about the thing that we've over, we've gone overboard in telling our kids they're good, they're perfect, they're, they, you know.
Yeah.
And
it's a.
They don't always need to win something.
It's a pro, it's a definitely, uh, um, continuum there.
Yeah, so. But yeah, it is an issue.
Who's getting, who's actually getting the, the thing?
That, that amount of days off the kids can miss, seventeen days, is just overwhelming to me.
Yeah.
I, I will say, nothing, but our attendance advocates are amazing.
Free and air.
Free is just.
If they know that kiddo can't get to school, I don't care what grade you're in, they will take a, a school vehicle. And they'll go, they'll go pick them up.
That's good to know.
They will, several times, I've talked to Bree, she was like, I gotta go, I'm, I'm picking up a kiddo for school, so. And they're really good at building relationships, so sometimes the parents are proactive, like, I'm stressed, I can't get the kid out of school, and, and Bree and, and I don't care, remember, and they, they'll, they'll show up and they'll provide support to the parent, and then they'll get that kiddo to school, but I definitely, I do hear what you're saying, yeah.
That's absolutely the solution for those children. The school situation is different, but thank you for sharing.
Yeah, they're, they're very, very.
Yeah.
Just say something negative about a parent in front of reading.
Show up for it.
Jumping back up, high school KPIs, uh, see the attendance in that, where we're at score-wise with the attendance, reading for, the reading, the ACT, reading, math, and science, again, didn't take them in twenty-four, uh, twenty-two, holy smokes here, twenty-three, twenty-four. But you can see where we were at twenty-four, twenty-five, our first year taking them, so those are gonna build as we, as kids get used to taking that assessment, that pre-ACT, and then transitioning into the ACT, we're gonna see those scores climb. Uh, AP and dual college enrollment, our goal is fifty percent. We're gonna be above that this year. Because of AP, seminar is gonna push our AP enrollment up. You add the dual credit, dual credit on that, we're gonna be above fifty percent, so we're gonna hit that KPI this year, which is, which is awesome. And then CTE concentrators, uh, fifty percent is our goal by the end of twenty, uh, by the end of twenty-twenty-eight. Now, CTE concentrators are kids that have taken two years of a CTE course, uh, then they begin to be.
Fifty percent of all high school kids?
Fifty percent of our kids, yeah, being enrolled as a CTE concentrator.
That's, so you couldn't even start counting it, but they're juniors.
Right, correct, and fifty percent of our juniors and seniors would be concentrators, um, and, um,
That's a high number.
It's a very high number, it's a very high goal that we set last year. The, one of the issues in this goal is we don't have enough CTE programs that we could ever get to fifty percent of concentrators. So, uh, we could either lower that goal to a more manageable number, or we could take the opposite approaches. How do we expand CTE to get more kids the opportunity to be concentrators? When I met with, uh, Nicole Rutherford from the city last week, we talked about how we could, uh, partner with the city on some possible CTE opportunities within civics government, um, and, and some other areas, some other pathway areas for students. That was one of the things that she's very interested in having more students be involved in the city, and I said, well, I really want to find opportunities for more pathways, maybe we could come up with some sort of solution that benefits them.
Sorry, does CTE have to kind of be some of the MHS online? Are CTEs, like, there's some unique classes, what, what that'd be?
It'd have to be career tech, oh, you'd have to be in hands-on.
Yeah, that's hands-on.
Now, does that mean our, our online kids could also go in and take CTE classes at that school? No, they, we can do that.
Sure.
Just, just big picture, what are our current CTEs?
We have manufacturing, so we have, um, metal fabrication and, uh, construction, uh.
So when, when can they get into those?
We have, I mean, we have eighth graders that are taking some of the, those classes now.
That's good. I, I thought a lot of it was.
No, we have, we have eighth graders and freshmen that are getting into those early beginning classes. They become concentrator after they get two years worth of credit.
Okay.
Uh, or the potential to be a concentrator. We have culinary arts, we have radio, the radio station, um.
And these are classes that somebody who enrolls as a freshman can take, just every year they can take that, or there's? I'm just trying to, trying to understand, you know, like, all the classes that I, that I took had, you know, one oh one, one oh two, one oh three.
Beginning, yeah, we have, let's just say that construction class, we have beginning construction, and then we have advanced, so it's, yeah. And they can take it, oh, they can take, they have, I think, beginning one, beginning two, advanced one, advanced two, and and, and move their way through, uh, the program. Um, culinary starts with, my daughter's taking it right now, what's it called? It's not culinary, it's like, uh, consumer food, something or other, uh, as a freshman. And so she's in that class right now, and that'll, that gives her the foundational to move into the culinary arts as she, as she gets older in high school, so. Um, similar to, you know, taking, right, one oh one and one oh two, and then one oh three.
Hard part for that is that almost all of those programs are the most expensive in school.
Yeah.
And we're going to have less money.
Less, yes.
And so adding to them makes it harder, and especially by the time you get to the senior level, those are usually very small pockets.
Yeah.
And that makes it harder to keep maintaining them.
And, um, our partners are, are working with the community college right now. We don't have very many things that align.
Right.
Uh, we only have two programs right now that align. I think I have them later in the presentation. Eli told me what they were, but we only have two programs that align, and so trying to find more alignments in those uh, CTE program classes between us and SWAC would possibly be a, a big help.
Yeah, so, but so culinary, manufacturing.
Culinary, manufacturing, radio, um, construction. Um, there's, there's another.
There is another one.
There's a health-related one. There is, there, thank you, David. There is a health-related one as well. Um, Eli tried to get early childhood in this year, and he wasn't able to get it in this year, we're working to do that.
So is the military one?
Uh, we have Junior ROTC as well, yeah, that's right. We had a Junior ROTC this year. Mr. Salter's the, uh, teacher of that course, sent through the Coast Guard. Um, and, um, we're one of four schools that have that program. There's not very many. Six. So, and I haven't, uh, haven't gotten feedback yet, it's early, we're four days in, as to kind of how that, what's going.
So many of these are teacher-dependent.
Yes.
So we had, we had Air Force ROTC most of the time I was at the high school, because we had a retired colonel and another person who was a retired enlistment person who ran the program. I mean, kids got flight instruction, they actually got their pilot's license, all that kind of stuff before they got out of high school, and it was pretty remarkable for those kids. And we always had a guard for every one of our opportunities. They had their own group that marched in with the flight and stuff. It was great opportunities for a group of kids, you know, but it took two military people. I mean, we had a hard time getting our radio guy this time.
Yeah, we did, we did, yeah, and, and and you're right, because I, I, Eli and I have had lots of conversations about the expansion of CTE classes, and it becomes, really becomes a asset-driven, human asset-driven. It was capital in what we've, what we've got available to us, so.
And priorities.
And priorities.
That's right, it takes more.
Um, looking at students enrolled in co-curriculars, seventy percent at the high school level, the reason for the the, uh, drop from a hundred to seventy is, we get to that point where students start going in the workforce. Uh, and that kind of becomes their co-curricular. Some of them for their own, I want spending money, some of them to supplement their family income. And so that's the reason why we, we look at seventy percent as a KPI. And then our four-year completion rate, um, this is a new, like, we started with the four-year graduation rate of being a hundred percent. That was the KPI that was originally developed. Uh, the high school, Kayla, special programs, and Eli came to me and said, that's, that's not possible to be a hundred percent, because students that graduate with a certificate of attendance aren't considered, or students that get a certificate of attendance are not considered graduates. We have those every year, and so literally, we could never get to a hundred, no, you know, it did not happen. So we changed it to four-year completion rate, so we can include those students, and our goal is to have a hundred percent of our students be a four-year completers, whether that is at Marshall or Destinations. And so, um, but.
What is that, an attendance?
So students that, um, attend school, um, but do not have enough credits due to, many of them, um, medically fragile, uh, or have, uh, you know, cognitive impairments, things of that nature, they can get what is called a certificate of attendance. It says, I went to school and, but I, I.
For twelve years or.
Twelve years, and I went to high school for four years, but I, I don't have enough credits and will not be able to get enough credits to qualify for a regular or modified. Um, we have those every.
Not many.
Not many, but we have, we have some or two. Um, and so we changed that to four-year completion rate, but we haven't been tracking the data for completion rate. We have five-year completers, and we have our four-year graduates, but we haven't been tracking four-year completers, and so that is something we're going to now start focusing on data collection, along with those CTE concentrators, because we don't have an accurate number, even with our required documents, we have, all the required documents are filled out as they're required. They don't give you concentration data, so we're gonna start tracking the concentrating.
So the completion rate, to be in a, in a, a regular attendance, you have to have ninety percent, then?
Yes, yeah.
So they need to have four years of high school at ninety percent. That's, that's as rare as a.
Yeah, yeah, it is right now.
That is a, that's an accomplishment, that is, you're okay, guys.
So I, I went through, uh, and then talked about my goals with, with many of you. Um, I have goals for this year, and they're lofty. Um, I also have goals for the future of the district, if so, given the opportunity. Some of these goals, uh, are budget-driven for sure, but in my eyes, this is, uh, this would really help advance our district. Um, continuing to analyze and grow our, our, our professional learning communities, our PLCs.
That's an S E L.
What's that?
S E L.
Social emotional learning. I'm getting there, yeah, I'll get there.
Oh, okay.
Uh, continue to analyze our P, our professional learning communities, social emotional, or excuse me, PLCs, teaching and learning, and our evaluation systems, and as I'm gonna talk about here in a little while, those seem to be the areas of talking to stakeholders that need, we've, we've scratched the surface, but we need to dive deeper. Um, identifying and aligning our social emotional learning and behavior practices, K-12. This year, with our K-sixes have a, uh, behavior playbook, an S E L playbook, um, that they're following, so that we're aligned both vertically and horizontally across the district. Um, we are really working hard with our character-strong S E L curriculum, uh, which is a K-12 curriculum, making sure that it's being done to fidelity at all and within every grade level that we have. Um, and tracking that. Um, I want to improve our passing scores on district assessments, our DIBbles of K-six, our Savs K-eight, our pre-ACT by ten percent, and our state measures of ELA math, science, and attendance by seven percent this year. Um, I would like to meet six of those KPIs by the end of the year. We have nineteen total by the end of twenty-twenty-eight.
KPI.
Keep forwards and gears. Uh, the, I feel like we, we've got two. I, I can check the box on the music one, I can check the box on the AP dual credit, so I'd like to try to get four more by the end of the year. Um, which is, and looking at them is a tall task, but we, we need to do our best efforts. And then I want all buildings to establish, display, and promote their SMART goals for the school year, so uh, specific, measurable, uh, attainable, uh, flattable and timely. Uh, and.
What are SMART goals?
What's that? Those are SMART goals.
What are SMART goals?
Oh, they're.
It's an acronym.
It's an acronym.
It's more.
I said.
Yeah, just one over it.
Specific, measurable.
Attainable. Um, realistic and timely.
There's an I and an E now.
In some places, there's an I and E for inclusion.
Yeah.
That's my guy going to announce.
And, uh, what I want, we did this last year at Millicoma, so at Millicoma last year, we had posters up in the hallway that said, here were our scores on the OSAS assessment for this year, and here's our goal for, or last year, here's our goal for this year.
I think Eastside did too.
And, and yeah, and we, and they have, Eastside had them for attendance, and they had them for their DIBbles and, uh, Savs. And we, um, just trying to get those out, we felt like it helped a lot when it came time for assessments to remind kids, like, hey, remember our goals? And we spent some time last year working with students and talking with them about what our school goals were and what their individual goals could be. We met and said, here's what you got in the beginning of the year, and here's what the DIBbles assessment thinks that you should get by your middle-of-the-year assessment. How do we get there? And we found it to be really helpful with students to understand the why of why they're taking the assessments and what the assessments can, can provide.
So where are we at with schools, um, with the buildings already displaying, because we know that two were last year. Did, were there others? I, I didn't check the others for that.
Um, I do not know if the other buildings displayed them last year. They will all display them this year. Uh, and, um, we're gonna work on getting those, goals are due at the end of the month, after they take the diagnostic assessments. The goals are due at the end of the month, and then we'll start displaying those posters, um, through my, my graphics, print them all for us last year, and we'll get them posted and up in the buildings.
For those in our schools.
Yes, so please, when you're visiting your schools, please look for those, um, those posters. They're not gonna be big posters, just, you know, fourteen by eighteen, you know, um, up in the hallways and, and around the building. We had them in every classroom, staff room, things like that, so.
So when buildings do parent newsletters? When we get those, are we gonna put those in the parent newsletter?
I had in every parent newsletter for Millicoma last year, and so did Eastside, so yeah, I just had the same image in every newsletter in the corner of a reminder of our goals.
That's good, okay.
And, um, the other thing that parents are going to get at the third through sixth grade level this year is that parent. this year is at parent teacher conferences, the teacher is going to go over their OSAS score from the previous year, which we have not done in the past. Um if the state test is going to become part of our accountability measures from the governor and from the state, we need to go over with families and explain to them what it means and how we can improve those scores.
Why it's important.
And why it's important. And so that's also going to be covered at fall conferences with families at the third through sixth grade level. Um future goals, these are my pie, these are pie in the sky. Like, these are, you know, lofty. But I would like to eliminate our opportunity barriers for students pre-K to twelve. I don't like participation fees. I don't like, I don't like fees. Um and I would like to try to find, we found a way to eliminate them when I was in Southland. It took a lot of work and it took some pretty big donors to get endowment funds um to get rid of some of those things. But we got rid of them at the junior high. We couldn't get rid of them at the high school just yet.
You need to put fees in there.
Yeah.
That's going to be it because opportunity barriers are going to be huge.
Yeah, but and and I
Transportation.
Yeah. And and I would, but I want to eliminate those. I'd love to get back to activity buses if we could and those kinds of things. Yeah.
That's that's true. I'm just saying, let's let's label it.
Sure.
And if we can start there.
Absolutely.
Wonderful.
Um I would love to have universal pre-K in Coos Bay schools. We've seventy kids, I believe. I think we're down to fifty kids that are on the waitlist for pre-K. Uh for our district within Little Pirates. And I'd love to get uh to where families just register for pre-K like they register for kindergarten, like they register for the junior high. And we we get our kids into the into our pre-K system.
But do we know how many kids that would encompass?
Well, based on um based on the enrollments at Millicom or excuse me, Madison and Eastside, about a hundred and sixty, five hundred and seventy. There's about eighty-five-ish in each building that are in kindergarten.
Are we talking about the everyone in in Coos Bay that's between three and four years old?
Yeah, so it'd actually be more than that. Thank you. Because our kindergarten numbers, it would be, it would be, it would be close to three hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, three hundred more kids.
But who's already enrolled in Head Start and other preschool programs?
But we don't pay for those and we're talking about paying for the programs now, so.
Right, but if we're looking at who's doesn't, if we're looking at universal preschool, so there's programs that already exist. So if they're already connected to a preschool, they're getting served.
Sure.
Except that they're paying for that service.
No, they don't.
And if they have an opportunity, they're not.
No, not 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 Head Start and all those others, so.
But question though, because our preschool, you get in, I I don't know if it's a point system or an income thing or would, okay, so at any point, are we talking about expanding that to?
Yeah, we've we've expanded. We're
You got some more
Working to expand to another class. We're waiting for, waiting for a grant from the state, but it looks like we're probably going to be in line to expand already this year again.
Yeah, I mean, you you are paying, but you're also getting state money for preschool, preschool programs.
Yeah.
Paying sixteen K per kid. Yeah, something like that. Yeah.
And that's and that's something we have to keep in mind because these are also very small class size.
Yes.
And and as they should be, they need to be.
They do.
And we're paying a much higher rate for our teachers in our preschools than all the other preschools and banks.
Correct.
As we should be.
No, I'm there's no but they're getting, I mean, it it all of those costs
Yes.
Are putting into a school district that doesn't get any money, state school fund
Yeah.
directly for that. And
That's all on
Yeah, you're never going to make money on preschool.
And and you have to recognize that right now, there's a bunch of money um for preschool, the same extra money that we got from the Student Success Act. A lot of money from that went into preschool, first time ever that the state put it in. And every year that we have the legislature meets, they talk about taking all that money away.
Yeah.
And giving it someplace else. So you got to be careful.
Oh, sure.
How do we?
Because this is another starter program.
This is pie in the sky and
Right.
And
I agree with it. It needs to happen.
And I don't, I mean, from the state perspective, preschool front is isn't going to go away. And from from what where I sit, actually, Coos Bay does a pretty good job
Right.
staying every year applying for the next
Absolutely.
non-senation council and staff, but it doesn't, if you are probably, I don't know the numbers, but you probably are losing money.
But if you're doing it right, you will be using money on it. But there's my question, going back to the question. Um I just want to know, Coos Bay wide, how many
Children.
How many children are falling through who are not getting any preschools?
You can get those demographics from the hub.
Okay.
The hub, Scrub Hub could tell you exactly how many children are right now, how old they are, and if they're being certain.
Right, if if they've applied, right?
Not even if they've applied.
No, they know all the kids.
They'll give you all the demographics.
Okay, how many three and four-year-old have had, did the area?
Yes.
And even if parents don't want any preschool whatsoever.
We'll know who they are.
How did they get that?
I don't know. Scrub Hub can tell you that.
I was going to say, how do they know that? Because there's a community
But I do think they can tell you how many there are.
There's a community, a couple of them that don't.
They, I think they're pretty good with those. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, why don't we let Gary finish?
Sure. Um I would love to see us expand our CTE programs as I've talked about. Um I would love to reestablish some of our after-school programs. We had an after-school program right here at Lawson College uh up until COVID, and then it went away. And we still have our after-school uh program with BREE uh through the TAP program, but that's our only after-school program we have right now.
And we tap into the wing of a building.
It's our tribal program that we have. Yeah.
What is it?
TAP.
Oh, TAP.
Yeah, TAP, our tribal program. And um I would, so I would love to see us get some after-school programs going back here, especially when we can probably break, well, not probably. We can bridge some of our our gaps that we have with our our literacy and our math scores right now. Um because some of those programs can really focus and help kids with those intervention pieces that we have. Uh I hear more and often from families, from our educators about establishing some sort of alternative ed program for the sixth, seventh and eighth grade. Um I hear it from kids, I hear it from parents, from families. What's that?
We do.
Besides Coos Bay Online. They need like a middle, they want something. Coos Bay Online is too um going online for them is not an option. They feel like that's kind of too far away from the brick and mortar. They kind of want a middle ground.
A destination.
Like a destination.
Isn't there a destination element in middle?
What's that?
No destinations in middle.
No, 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 no for destinations.
Resource Link has, they have in-person
But it's full. It's full. And so we're capped. And so
How many is that? Yeah.
Uh thirty-four, I believe, was the number that came out last week on our enrollment data. I'll look it up and tell you.
That's interesting.
But
Go to their board meeting.
Um but we we hear that more and more. We have families that talk to us and say, the junior high is too big, it's too busy, it's too this. But we, but online's not what I want for my child. I'm really looking for that small environment. And many of, and sometimes many of them have a student that is at destinations and are like, my student is at destinations, thriving. But I feel like my my student at the junior high or at the, you know, or at sixth grade is struggling. And so trying to find a way to have a middle ground alternative ed program that that really can support families.
So we have in our online program, we used to have a sit-down place so they could do the online school. At, it was at Arty, but now it's
Oh, yeah.
So uh so they could come and drop off every day and go do it. It's still online, but there was
It's like a lab-based
Yeah, we still have that.
No, we don't have that at all.
Okay.
Um
That's a good alternative.
It is. It is.
But that's not what you're talking
It's not what I'm talking about, but it does, I think, help with some of the situations with families of, I don't want to leave my student at home as a seventh grader, just be an online student. And I I worked in one of those schools at Westland Tech years ago, uh and I ran the lab. It was one of my first jobs. And um there's still connections to be built with those students that came in every day. Even though they were online, they still came in every day and we chatted, we talked and we
They had lunch, they had
They had lunch.
All those things happened to them.
Yeah. And then obviously, by the end of twenty twenty-eight, I would like to to uh meet the all the K, all nineteen KPIs that we developed in the spring.
Wow. So four is your goal for this year, to meet four of the KPIs?
Four of the K, no, six of the KPIs. We met two. I want to meet four more.
Four more this year.
Yeah.
So and then you're thinking and then nineteen and
Yeah. I'm I'm hoping that, you know, I know by twenty twenty-eight, we're going to have to, those those proficiency scores, we're going to have to attack. And so um my hope is that
Exponentially.
Exponential growth is going to happen here and so.
He did say pie in the sky.
I did say pie in the
He did say pie in the sky.
Shoot, shoot for the moon.
I I really appreciate, is that the end?
Oh, no.
No, it's not.
I, because you're, so you're moving on to current challenges.
Yeah.
I really appreciate how concrete your goals are.
Thank you.
They're, you know, they're pretty much all measurable in some way or another, which is, makes it clear. And it'll make the ability to report back on them really clear, and I think that's great. Um and I don't know how you display them on the posters or how the schools are going to display them, but one thing that I really wonder about is sort of um, I I just wonder, I I think about the buy-in um from not only from staff, but from families whose who for whom a a KPI or a goal of seventy percent doesn't mean much of anything. And so I think about um some principles, like a step in between. Um which is some language about we can all agree that, and so we are going to. So I just wonder, I wonder about that. I wonder about the narrative of um sharing. I mean, you're sharing these goals, that's great. I I really, I think they're really um spot on. Um I wonder about if it's if if it's worth thinking about how the tell, how to tell the story by getting some, doing some leveling and getting in order to get more buy-in from people for for whom those goals either to feel completely out of reach or don't make sense, or they don't understand them or
Great point.
It'll never happen for my kid or, you know, or what is that picture? Or I don't really, you know, I'm too concerned about whatever.
Yeah.
But I, but I, but I do want, I do want little Arnie to read.
Yeah.
So
Took me a long time.
So
But
You know, those kinds of principles that level, that are in between leveling education speak and what we all agree on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do hear that from families of, I want the best for my child, but I'm working fifteen-hour days, put food on the table, you know, and
So when you, when you can bridge that gap a little bit, it helps to tell the story. And that's where you get staff maybe more motivated. Right, to do the, all the things you're asking of them, dream big and do better. And all those are wonderful, wonderful messages. But where's that agree, you know, where's that shared agreement?
Um well, and then we'll kind of talk a little bit about relationship building. Yeah. So the three things that have come up is as kind of challenges that we're going to face and we are facing. Budget is 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 one. You know, the district's been using reserves since Esar went away uh a few years ago as COVID funds. Um and so we've been kind of dipping into some of our reserves to try to keep our staffing leveled at where where it's at. And at some point, we're going to have to address, address it more than we have. Uh we've done little bits and pieces here, but we're going to have to take some some bigger steps here at some point, probably this year, of looking at what are our really key priorities uh for staff. Better, the federal tax changes have affected Oregon. There's been kind of a trickle-down effect uh to our tax revenue. So we are slightly less than a billion-dollar shortfall as a state uh for um coming up. Um which, right now, they're telling us uh in COSA and amongst state leaders, like, don't panic, but 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 plan, you know, don't panic, but start having some plans in place for Plan Bs and Plan Cs in terms of if you start seeing big shortfall or or little shortfall. Um unemployment's uh above five percent for the first time since twenty twenty-one. And again, you know, so we're we're going to face some sort of shortfall next year or leveled funding, which essentially means we we would be in a shortfall. Um challenge uh that we're facing this year, special education, alternative education model, Kayla Crook, our Dr. Kayla Crook, our special programs director is doing a fantastic job, but we have taken over the life skills from the ESD. We rebranded it as as Independent Skills Center. Um and um so far this week, we're 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 seeing some challenges that we're addressing staffing-wise, which we knew we would see. Um and it's a new program, so we're um we're we're handling it. She's doing a fantastic job, Alice, as is Allison McNeil, who's the administrator for that program. Yes. Um we have put in also a supported inclusion model for students, so we're getting more students into their general ed setting with support from uh teachers, uh special education teachers and educational assistants. And so that those two new models are creating uh lots of work for for Dr. Crook and and her team. Um but we're taking issues as they come, addressing them, being proactive as much as we can, trying to improve every day. Um and then again, those expanded options for families, you know, Dr. Ainsworth talked last year about education becoming all a cart. And and in this trip, that's that's happening. So finding, I I've said this before, I'm a huge proponent for putting adults and children in the best position to be successful. And so how can we help families find that best position to be successful and support them? And so uh those are some challenges that we're seeing in terms of alternative ed. Um relationship building came up a lot during the stakeholders. Uh leadership continuity, that would, that would be my, the mission I came up quite, quite, quite a bit. And um so I think that is um obviously a challenge that we have as a district and um that's all I'll say about that.
Ever since Dan came on the board, we've got it. But we came on at the same time.
She was just there to point that out. Continuing stakeholder buy-in, um I'm going to talk here just a second about wanting to do some more surveying of staff uh and students. Um doing more listening sessions. I'm going to get back out at the end of September and October when things quiet down. Part of my hiring in August was I wanted to get more feedback from our 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 staff members, but I I couldn't force them to come in in their summer. And then I didn't want to take the first couple of weeks when they're so busy with me going around talking. So I'm going to wait till the end of September or October and then get out the buildings for some more listening sessions. And getting some more student voice through these surveys on climate and things like that in our building, not just the co-curriculars, but why are you coming to school? Why are you not coming to school? What do you like about our schools? What needs to improve in our schools and things of that nature? And I have a couple. Uh I have another idea that I'm going to share in a few minutes. And then including student and family voice and efficacy in the education. Uh I'm reading a book, which I believe is coming up on one of my slides, this one right here, Leading Impact Teams. That talks a lot about student efficacy and family efficacy within the education. So our four PLC questions, you know, uh about uh what do I want all learners to know? Uh how will I know when they know it? What will I do if they don't know it? What will I do to accelerate their learning if they do? Turning that around to student voice. What do I need to know? What, how will I know when I know it? And what will I do when I, when I don't know it? And what will I do to accelerate my learning or help my classmates when I do know it? So turning that that, those PLCs into student efficacy type things. Um and it's really been good. So diving in, building that culture of collaboration. When we did our PLC models last year, it was very top-down for Dr. Ainsworth and and the admin team, Dr. Ainsworth and the admin team. We didn't do a lot of teacher uh and staff collaboration in that process. We kind of said, here's our new PLC process, let's go do it. And I think this year, we need to look at some more collaboration pieces diving within those four questions. So for example, the first question is, what do I want all students to know? We really need to get our staff members involved in looking at those curriculum standards. What are the priority standards? What are the standards? We just want to have exposure to students. Priority standards are probably the ones that are going to be on the state test. Um and 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 then, so getting some of those things built in. And then again, I talked about the student efficacy. Our evaluation systems, our evaluation system currently right now is a lot of a narrative and not very much evidence-based. So we're seeing things for sure and we're writing about them as administrators, but we're not looking at specifics of like learning targets posted, learning targets are identified are identified to the students and they know them. Student engagement, you know, we've talked about student engagement, but like, what are the evidence of student engagement? So I'm looking at um the five dimensions uh framework that's through University of Washington's Center for Educational Leadership. COSA is also partnering with them this year and looking at ways of improving our evaluation system that will provide us better data. Will also provide us better opportunities for feedback, which is something I heard from staff. It also aligns with our walkthrough, our ORTII, which is Oregon Response Intervention. Is uh at the K-six level, it's a reading intervention system uh that we've been doing the last few years. The five dimensions aligns with our walkthrough tool. We go into watching a a a reading lesson, an ELA lesson uh with ORTII. Um it also aligns with our Avid at the seven twelve level, which Avid is a program geared towards uh student uh preparing students for, a lot of it's geared towards first first generation, trying to get first generation college students, but a lot of it is student success, note-taking, reading, uh reading a passage for context clues, highlighting, things like that. And it aligns with our Avid walkthrough. And it aligns with our Avid walkthrough tool as well. So, um, heading that way. And then. Really improving our teaching and learning practice. We talked a ton last year about John Hattie and his visible framework, his visible learning framework. And what was a big effect size for students, collective teacher efficacy being the highest one. But we want to really dive into what are the practices within that visible framework? Um, like what does micro-teaching look like? What does collective teacher efficacy look like? Teaching it and then teaching it to our staff about, you know, what is good classroom discussion at the seven twelve level? What is a framework of a good discussion? Things like that. And really diving deep in that, which we didn't do last year. So again, we scratched the surface on some great things last year. Now it's time to kind of dig deep and really improve the, the little pieces that are within there. So move forward.
Can I?
Yes. We're almost done. I promise. I know this is long. I apologize. My board reports will not be this long.
No, no, no.
So moving forward again, I want to, we're, we're going to start doing a professional development plan. Uh, with our district admin in our monthly meetings around teaching and learning. Our PLCs and the evaluation, feedback and reflection. I'm a big person on reflection and looking at my practice and how can I be better? Um, so we'll look at those three components. For example, uh, on Monday, our first admin meeting. We are going to look at, uh, high-impact teaching strategies. Uh, we're going to, uh, I have some reading for our admin group. Uh, we're going to create a PowerPoint as an admin group or Google slide, and then they're going to go back and teach it to their staffs in their next staff meeting. So this top-down approach that, um, I will work with our building admin on specific strategies. It will go back to their staff and they will teach it to their staff, which will then get to the students through high-impact teaching strategies. So that's going to be our focus for September. Our focus for October is going to be, uh, PLC components and that first component, which is. What I want all students to know and let's break those standards. So that's kind of my plan this year for professional development with our admin team and then heading down to our building levels. Uh, which in turn is going to raise our assessment scores, our student outcomes and those KPIs that are around achieving. Uh, second, I want to enhance our partnerships that we have in the community. Uh, our tribal partners focusing on cultural responsiveness with our staff. We have some professional developments that are coming up with our K six staffs out at the Frank House. Uh, one's, one group's going to go out at the end of September, one's going to go out in November, uh, in October, in October. Um, because they can't hold all of our K six staff at once at the Frank House, but we really feel like it's important for them to get out. Um, city of Coos Bay, enhancing our communication, uh, providing more opportunities for students and staff to engage in city matters. Uh, met with Nicole, we're going to start doing more celebrating student achievement and staff achievement at city council meetings. Uh, we have one coming up, uh, on the sixteenth, uh, where Kara Davidson is going to be recognized for her elementary principal of the year. That was supposed to happen in August, but Dr. Ainsworth left, and so it's now going to happen in September. Um, but you know, getting those kids that are showing improvements in our reading scores and our math scores. Getting them into the city council meeting and letting them be recognized in front of our city, um, for, for their achievements and staff for raising. You know, achievement scores, building relationships, our, uh, Glenn Crook and our, in our crew that went to Nationals, uh, for, um, manufacturing. Getting them in front of the back.
Oh, he's going to love that.
Yeah, yeah. Student voice. So we have two things that are coming up for student voice, and this one's going to have staff and family voice, the first one, our student success committee ran by Mr. David Kegley over there. Um, that's going to be, uh, coming, uh, our first meeting is next week, right Devin?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday is our first meeting. Uh, and that, uh, is going to, uh, be around, uh, again, a lot of it's going to be around. Eliminating opportunity barriers for all of our students and how we can raise, uh, achievement opportunities for our students. And then the second one, I'm stealing from when I was in South Lane, and we're going to have a superintendent advisory committee. Students are going to represent every building in our district, including the K twos. And they're going to meet here every other month with the cabinet and their building principals, and we're going to have like breakfast, donut, something. And we're going to talk about what's going on in their buildings. What are the positives? What would they like to see improved? Um, why, what they feel is, uh, um. Uh, what they feel like as a district, we need to do a better job of. And we'll, again, we'll have representatives from every building from K, uh, pre clown, about pre-K, to be honest with you, but from K twelve. Uh, we will have representative every building that will come in and, and will be with us. And we'll do that every other month throughout the school year. We can hear from students directly about what's going on in their buildings and how the district has worked. Uh, which I can tell you from my time in South Lane, uh, got some great feedback. From the junior high and high school students and some great stories from the elementary students. So, um, and then, uh. Working with our partners over at SWAC, uh, again, alignment of those CT programs. We currently have two programs that align. Um, and, uh, and then also what we're hearing is, uh, we need to have pathway courses for foundational math. Our students are coming in and they're scoring fairly well on writing, or they're coming in ready for the writing portion, but they're not ready for math eleven. And those need to find some, some better foundational courses. Questions and feedback. After all that, I apologize for that being so long. Again, I will not be that long moving forward.
I would mention that you should. Almost all of our Native Americans have to go to the Cookwell as opposed to Clusey, and we need to get them engaged more.
Yeah.
Um, they have a neat lawn house, but you've got to crawl through the door to get in it. It's, it's truly original and it's, and it's format been much different from the one that Cookwell set. Um, and they have always been the secondary tribe around here. So I would encourage you to have conversations with their people. They've had the biggest changes in their leadership over the last number of years, so it's important. But they, they have a lot to offer and I would hope that we would continue to have conversations with them. The other tribe that feels really close to us, but they aren't, is Celeste. And part of the reason for that is that all of our tribes were marched up the coast to go to the Celeste reservation. Many of them didn't want to go, so they came back because they felt that environment was totally different for them. So, and there's an interesting, long time history with our Native Americans and they need to have people understand and. Acknowledge who they are. And so I just encourage you to, going out to the lawn house is really awesome and it's a great place. But it's, anyway.
Okay.
I just want to encourage you to have conversations with them because they always feel like they get a little bit of luck.
Yes, I agree.
Absolutely. I'll take care of it. Yeah, please.
Um, in the very, very beginning, going back sixteen slides.
Sorry.
You had talked about, um, the staff, your staff talking about improvement through positive communication. They requested improvement through positive communication. What does that look like? What, what are we referring to exactly? Is it? They, they haven't been receiving positive communication?
In trying, in trying to be respectful.
Yes.
Um, they felt like last year, the message that was delivered to them consistently was.
You have to do better.
It's that, it's not just that we have to do better, but that we. Wasn't about improving, it was about. We were failing, if that makes sense. So it was more of a negative connotation, we have to do better than. We need to improve, we need to focus on our practice, we need to take accountability and responsibility for what we're doing. It was a more negative connotation. I, and, and the. Feedback that I received and not just from the opening, my opening spiel at the. Welcome back, but in through email communications and such is that they've appreciated that I've been very positive and wanting more. Um, that a lot of times they left or they read communications and felt like they were a failure for them. And, and so that was, that was evident and talked, discussed consistently.
So how do you, how do you take that and then move forward? What are, what are your plans with that? Because you're going to still need, they still need to get better.
Absolutely.
How are you, are you just going to do the, you know, sandwich approach, you know?
I think that, yeah, I think you, we're, we're, our message is positive as a group. And then you start to become more warm demanding of, of, of individuals and that, that. Are in there, are not buying in or are pushing back or not. Making the necessary adjustments and advancements that we need to see the student success that we, we need to see.
Um, I like that you're talking about making the evaluations more specific and less narrative.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, or I would just relate the example of, um, you know. Certain outcomes after a procedure are yes, no, right? Good, bad. Your relationship with the person is, is different and more narrative. And so we're only giving people. Narrative feedback about their relationship with their students or how the global classroom is doing. We're probably not drilling down on those key parts of teacher effectiveness where it's like. You're really great. You make a really warm classroom, but your goals aren't posted. You've got to post your goals and because that's going to help other students. So I, I really.
I think one of the things I heard from some teachers that just conversation, it might fall along with this, is that. When the communication would go out, it was kind of like a blanket. And like, maybe I'm doing all of these things in my classroom and my meeting, my metrics, my students are passing, but then I'm still getting this very. This message that yes, we need to be doing this whole and it can't just be in my classroom, but instead of reaching out to me and saying. What are you doing in your classroom that we can lend to another classroom? It felt like everybody's being punished, even if they're meeting. So would that be?
I don't know.
That, that was. Or would that be more like principals role when dealing with teachers? I mean, you would give the overall communication. I'm just saying, there's a difficult and, and delicate situation you're in.
Mm-hmm.
Moving from a peer to, you know, a superintendent role. And so we've acknowledged that as a board that, so holding people accountable, but doing it in a way that's, you know. Positive communication. I think there was wonderful things that Dr. Ainsworth was doing right and. And Dr. McGagney also were doing right. And there were things that didn't mesh with the system. Finding your own stride and able to do that.
I'll give an example.
Yes, thank you.
So an example from one of the buildings that was shared with me was a bloodbath. A group of staff and a staff meeting were told, this is what we're doing. If you are not happy, there's a hundred and ninety-six other school districts to go work for. Go. So that's just a concrete example of, and so that was where I'm more of a, we need to do better. What, what we're doing isn't, is not good enough for our students, is not good enough for our community, is not good enough for our families. I want to help everyone in this room do a better job. How can I help you do better? What can I do to help you?
I'm here to support you.
I'm here to support you. So that's, that's an example that was used numerous times.
Oh, my gosh.
Stakeholder conversation.
Oh, my.
And so I left the, and I have numerous people that reached out. I have cards on my desk, which, which were very kind and very lovely. Uh, people that said that some, somebody said it was the twenty-eighth superintendent thing that they had heard, which they were being facetious, obviously. But they had said it was that it had been a long time since they left the opening welcome back. Um, more motivated than discouraged.
But for you, cheers to that.
Yeah, I mean, sorry.
No, that's okay. Um, and I guess that's where I, I go back a current to wow. Um. May, taking a, I, I hope that you can take a look at the words that are being used, the way communications are going because the, I mean. You do have to have a hierarchy. Somebody has to make the tough decisions and you need. You can't, you won't, though, those needles won't move unless, um, those principals or those, those other folks that are in the middle there. Are able to be motivational in, in ways that are understandable and that get buy-in from people. And, um. You know, so I, I go back to thinking about a more of a systems thinking kind of a way. And acknowledging that we ought to have a hierarchy, but also if you don't have that, if you can't organize some of that buy-in about shared understandings. Um, it's, it, it's, um, it's a challenge. It's the challenge. And I know how fast everybody is going at school all the time. And so this is where you end up with. Um, there's a hundred and twenty other school districts, just, just go or, and that other, everybody's got to do better. Everybody's got to do better. And, and those, those, that's very, nobody can really. Get excited about these, those messages. So, so finding the.
And that's why I'm hopeful, that's why I'm, I'm, hopeful is not even the right word because I'm confident. That if we focus on those areas of the teaching and learning, improving the, the, the quality and the depth of the PLC. And the evaluation systems, that we're going to get the buy-in that we need, we're going to get the motivation that we want, and we're going to get the results.
I think you're, you're spot on by choosing the PLCs as your mechanism for that work. I mean, even just looking at the Oregon. Framework for teacher and administrator, administration eval, that's even better than, than just, um, you know. Anecdotal or, or narrative feedback. That offers both qualitative and quantitative, which you need with teachers.
And we're, we're actually getting, we, in, in, in the district, we have an evaluation committee, which hasn't met. At least since pre-Phil, would be my guess. Um, because we've used the same system since I've been here. That committee is already scheduled to meet. In two weeks to start the process.
Is that one of the committees we're out?
I believe so. So I think we'll be reaching out for a committee member.
I'd raise my hand for that because I feel really strongly about that one. And I, I guess all I'm trying to say in my not very articulate way. Um, it's okay to slow down and really think about the communication, the messages and the words that you're. Using to, to get that buy-in. So because you, she's right, you are in a place where.
Yeah, absolutely. Arnie, go ahead.
I do believe that you're on the right track, that, that my real thing is that. Teachers need to believe, understand and accept that they are the only person in the system. That can change that child. Cause they're the one that has the direct access. And they have to believe that they can do it and that all kids that are sitting in their classroom can do it and learn it. Because many of our teachers don't believe that. They believe that a group of them can. But there's another group that they, no matter what they do, they can't help them. And yet. Clearly, if you really think about it and reflect on it, you're the only person that can. I mean, you can hope for parent help and all that stuff, and you don't always get it. It doesn't matter. At the end of the day. You got them for the whole day or however long your class has been. And you are the person who has an opportunity. To change that kid's life. And you got to believe it, you got to want to do it, and you got to. Get the motivation that tells you, I have to. Change what I'm doing with this kid because they need something different than what I'm giving everybody else. And until they get that, it's going to be hard to make those. Big changes that we want.
And that was one of my slides at the welcome back was believe. I used to Ted, I used to Ted lessons.
That's right.
But, you know, it was believe, believe in yourself, believe in your students, believe in your colleagues, believe in your admin, believe in the system. And if we do all those things, we're going to, that's a big step towards positive results.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt here for a minute. It is now eleven fifty-one. Kevin has to leave in an hour and ten minutes. We have a lot of agenda to go. Um, this is a working lunch. I think we're going to not do the videos right now. We'll just pass on those. Um, but I think we should break, go get something to eat and come back.
Are we taking a picture? Do we want?
Afterwards.
But I mean, before he leaves.
Oh, yeah, before Kevin leaves, we'll stop and take a picture.
I was going to say.
Or we could just leave him out.
Crop me in later, whatever.
Use my old ones.
But so please feel free to go get pizza and everything. But while you do that, Gary, I have a question.
Yeah, please.
And it's a nuts and bolts question. As we look at the necessity that we're going to have to cut more gas most likely. Uh, in the next budget, I'd like to know what we're doing now. Uh, because how many classes are over thirty? How many teachers are working through their prep period? And how many, you know, are already giving up stuff?
What we're going to do at the end of September, uh. Marina and I are going to sit down and we're going to look at enrollment and enrollment compared to what we've sent to OD for our projections. Cause that's, that's a real big thing we need to look at if we're, if we've sent OD. You know, we have less students than we sent OD. We know we're not getting, we're getting even less money. If we have more, we know we have a little bit of surplus to work with. Um, that's one thing. We're going to look at our staffing. We're also going to look at, I mean. Basically, um, having. Building admin and coming in and saying, what's the priority of your building? You know, and things of that. So we can start planning on looking at. The financial piece and the human capital piece and like, what can we, what can we, what are our priorities and what?
I sort of think we need to do it quickly.
Yeah.
Cause I'm getting contacted by a teacher. Because I'm getting contacted by a teacher who has more than thirty kids and is working through their prep period and is feeling overwhelmed in the second week of school already. So we need to figure out a way to either compensate for some time off someplace else or give you more money so that you can.
Encourage that, that teacher, afford it to be an all encourage that teacher department, nobody's gonna stray here. We can start those opportunities. Please.
Thank you, David, for everything you've done.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely. Really impressive, but.
Oh, happy to help.
So David's becoming, whoa, are you gonna pause it?
I think we're gonna work in one.
Yeah, I thought we were working.
Oh, okay.
It is on.
Well, and and sometimes like we, and our options are. Yeah, they so, they probably realize we don't like this, but also we have.
Yeah. Good job. Go for it.
Yeah, we think we take one.
Honestly, I asked for three and I got eight.
Okay. I am?
Oh, it is fine.
Oh, but that must be a new me.
Yep.
Thermometers that they have for every kind of thing up there. It'd be fun to have those.
Yeah. And um,
I never met a parent. That's not a good parent.
Yeah.
Building another.
Is there any more feedback for Gary? Don't worry. If we talk in. Nope, hearing none at this point. Okay, our first issue under board items is vacancies on the budget committee. This is a discussion that we need to have about how we want to fill the budget committee. Um, a lot of it is a response to the budget committee hearing we had last year, where some of the individual budget committee members seem to be more interested in saving someone's job than in discussing the budget as a whole. And so the question is, in the past, we have traditionally just reappointed people when their term is up. Is that something we want to continue to do? Do we want to, every time that there's an opening, even if it's a, someone who's going to be finishing their term, we have everyone apply again? We've had some of our budget committee members who've been on like more than twenty years. It's like their job and we're not getting new voices in as a result. We're not getting new ways of looking at our budget. So it's a topic I'm throwing out there for how people would like to.
How many vacancies do we have? Sorry.
You're good.
We have one official vacancy. This would give us three vacancies if we were to have everyone who's up this term also have to apply.
Historically, it's very hard to get people interested in the budget committee.
I, I.
And it can be really hard being here for the longest now. We, we had a scrape sometimes. I mean, we were really lucky the year that you had your friend and we had a bunch of people apply, but hey, I remember we had a really tough time, so.
But I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we don't ultimately appoint them if there's no one else applying.
Sometimes people will.
Well, yeah, and I think, I think that's the the distinction is it's not about removing anyone or moving pieces. All it is is about, because if we just appoint without a nomination process, we don't know who didn't want it. If we, if we decide, as a matter of practice, every time your term is up, just like a board member has to be reelected. And then you have the opportunity to say, I don't wanna do this anymore, or I wanna continue, so I'm gonna put my name back in the hat. But then it it provides the opportunity for new voices to be considered. And if that person that is sitting on the budget committee is the best nominee deemed by the board, then they are going to continue theirs.
What's our policy right now?
Did we see some policy about that when you were in policy committee?
Yeah, it it basically says that the board can nominate or or continue someone who's already in the seat. They can choose to.
Was it may, shall, can, or will?
It's not a will. It's a may.
It's a may.
Where is that policy?
Um, I can find it right now.
Because to me, when I read the policy, it actually seemed pretty clear that we could ask.
Yeah, it says the board may appoint budget committee members to as many consecutive terms as deemed appropriate.
And so what do we do now? We just forever?
Yeah, it's a two pager, but that was.
We just let him go.
Yeah, see, I mean, we could, we could set a limit, we could amend the policy and say you can't serve more than two terms.
Or you could say that you could reapply after two terms. So you wouldn't have to bring out every year, what numbers?
But you, but your term is not up every year, it's every three years.
Oh.
It's every, yeah. With the B E A.
If we're on it.
Yeah, I'm pulling it up.
Oh, he's got it up there now.
Thank you. Who's our, is it Danny? That's our educational equity.
Yeah.
Can you scroll up a little bit?
Down.
Yeah, you know what I mean.
This way?
Don't sass me.
No.
I was clar, I was asking a clarifying question.
No, you're, you're perfect. Thank you. I'll just change that at our first meeting at the beginning of the school year. So we're not stuck in the boat month of August since we're already kind of compliance with that.
Well, you can announce the vacancies, but we'll receive applications. You can also contact those who previously ascertained their willingness to serve another term. So all three of those options can happen at that meeting.
Yep.
And so you write, you do, you do those three things.
I would say this, we should, we should open an all. We should contact the ones that are previously on state, if you wanna stay on it. If they say yes, we assume that's their application.
Oh, okay.
For them. Others would have to apply and then make it to. For me, that would make sense.
Besides the apply part, right? You do all.
No, because what what Arnie's saying is, rather than have them do an application, they would say, I do want to continue. Your, that's your application and your former service.
But that's what we do now.
No, because now we're opening it up for other nominations. And so you're gonna be considered along with everybody else.
If they say yes, we put them on the list.
Oh, we put them on the list.
They will be.
Okay.
Yeah, and then no one else gets to apply, the way it's set up now.
All right, I like that.
I think, I think the policy actually has good instructions here.
And I think what Addie was addressing that we kind of had that situation in the last budget committee is redirecting that person to like have public comment during a regular board meeting and then making sure that the budget committee is educated on their actual role.
I think part of the problem with the last one was past practices, those people on the budget committee couldn't bring up anything they wanted to ask about in the budget committee. Our news independent didn't appreciate that. I'm just saying, he did not appreciate that they were questioning what they'd already put down. And we used to have really long budget committee meetings that lasted for weeks and weeks and they had to keep coming back because they, they, they really did get into the budget.
Yep.
We've changed all that in the last ten or fifteen years. Now, they present a budget and they expect you to vote on it the same night. That never happened in the past.
And you got it the day before, that was it.
That's right. Because there's, the budget committee is a totally different being than it used to be. And the two people that questioned it have been on it for twenty or thirty years. So they understand what happened in the past. They didn't appreciate the the way it's presented and interacted.
Right, because they wanted to have a specific position and person talked about.
Correct.
In a budget committee meeting, which is not.
It wasn't necessarily about the person. It 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 could have been.
It kind of was, the position.
But it was truly about the position, there was only one person in it, so.
Yeah.
And if you read the fir, very first paragraph of this, it says, it's not appropriate, if you go up to the top, for the committee to discuss personnel.
Right.
Says that right away. Committee does not have the authority to add programs or approve additional personnel or increase salaries.
I agree.
But it might not have been discussed for twenty years without.
Exactly. Exactly.
So, so a retraining opportunity.
Right.
So um, at our meeting on Monday, should we announce that there are three positions open?
Well, we should probably communicate with the, for the budget committee members, so they know that the process.
It's actually too late for us to do it.
Communicate with them?
Then we have to do it by our party.
I just want them, you know.
Well, if you're gonna follow a policy, somebody um, would reach out to each one and say, would you like to serve again, yes or no?
Yes.
And write that down.
Could you do that for the existing board members?
That are up in their terms.
Whose terms are like expiring this.
And then you will know how many vacancies.
Well, those could be vacancies, even if they say yes. Because reaching out to them lets them put their name in the application.
They need to know.
Yeah, they need to.
You're asking not. Expired, I see what you're saying, yeah. So it's two, two questions.
Yeah, your term has expired, are you interested in?
Be applying or your term is, well, even for those who have not expired.
There's still a lot.
Are you, are you interested in being considered for another term?
That's, that's the way to put it. Are you interested in being considered for another?
Not apparently not a third question. Um, so yes, I will reach out to them and I will basically say, you know, we, we, the board has decided that we would like any who comes expiring to be considered again, and we will open those vacancies. Would you like to be considered for another term? One vote will add you into the.
And it's not board has decided, it's per policy B D E A.
Yeah, yeah, give everybody a copy.
But as far as, I guess, I mean, I guess technically it is still that policy, but we're we're changing the way that we've used the policy in the past, so I'm thinking of how to, how to translate. Because they're used to when I say, you're gonna serve another term, and they say, yes, it's over.
We just, the board has decided to interpret B D E A to mean, we will put you on the list if you are interested in serving again, but we're gonna open all three so that we can get uh, find out if there's other people out there that would like to do it.
Yeah, ascertain if there's any other interest.
Okay.
Well, you know how to do it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll juice it up and I'll send you guys a, a draft.
Thank you.
I think, I I think at least one of them will say, yes, I would like to try again, I don't know for sure.
Is this gonna be in motion or?
I don't think so, since it's really just our interpretation of the policies are in there.
Okay. Um, board goals.
What are you saying? Are you gonna bring up our goal before?
Yep, our board goals of twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, can you bring those up on the big screen?
Yep, working on it right now. Yep, working on it right now.
If we click on that link, does that link also?
Yes, it does. It brings it right up in front of you.
I mean, that's a little bigger than we need, I think. Okay. There's one.
I have to win white number one.
Yeah, I like number one too. It was a good goal. It's a really good goal.
And it's said in the right way in my opinion. If we haven't tried to get a plan for them to one of those three things, we haven't been doing a very good job.
Number three, we've done, right?
Was two, yeah. Number two, it sounds like.
We're going to plan to do that.
He's planning on surveys. He's talking about gathering more input.
Yeah, we didn't do that last year, did we?
I don't recall. We did it. I think we did at least one, but I think maybe two. I don't know how.
I never saw the results.
Twice a year. The seed survey is once, once. And then I feel like there was another one chat add, but I could be wrong on the second survey. We did do one. And then this, it's, it's not once a year, it's once per term.
Yeah.
So if you were someone who was reelected, you need to do it again. If you are someone who's new to the board, you will need to do it this year.
It was reelected.
And Diane.
And.
I believe.
That's online.
I kind of already got it, actually.
That's an online thing.
Is it?
It is now, yeah. OSBA did offer to sit down as a reported webinar.
But I think we should take that up.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not through OSBA.
Yeah, I came up with that one.
O G E C is through PSBC, I think. Who, who is it that we go through the?
It's O GEC, but OSBA offers a training on it now that's certified by O GEC.
And OS, uh, OSBA does it online as well?
Yes.
And they give this, the training at the conventions.
Oh, they do.
Yeah, that's where we took it.
We'll sign up for it. We got it. I'm happy to hear it.
Are we going to talk about that just on Monday?
What?
November?
Oh, yeah, I can put it as an item for information at the end.
So you can get a headcount?
Yeah.
Is it already booked up?
Oh, no, I think registration, I don't even know if registration's open or just open.
If it opened, it's probably.
It, it may be. I, I will. You know, the.
Marriott, uh, Portland every year. I didn't mind the walk. Actually, it was so pretty.
It really is nice. It's not raining really hard.
Yeah, well, we got lucky though, I think. I don't think it rains.
Okay, um, so do we like the first one? Do we want to keep the first?
Yes.
Okay. Number two.
I think it's part of what we need to do, so I'd say two is a good one as well.
Okay.
Person.
I agree.
Do we have any other goals of Gary and of the district that Gary can get us to?
The KPI, we can just support him in those.
And those come, some of that will come up in the superintendent's next session.
Those to me align with number one. Clear, measurable targets.
Yeah.
Um, what else? We've had reading goals before. We've had social emotional. We've had math.
What about a goal about stability and leadership and leadership and increased or
positive accountability?
No, communication.
Increased communication.
Been hearing a lot to talk about accountability, but maybe not increased is the word, but.
Yeah, because we've got a lot of. Effective?
Effective would be a more appropriate word, maybe effective. Addie talked the words with that for a few minutes, but effective communication that, um, more transparent. Assists constituents and meeting their own goal.
These are our whole, our board.
Our group of seven, what is our goal? Uh, well, we need to, we need to complete our superintendent process.
Yeah.
Well, that's where I was going with.
Identify a permanent superintendent.
Yeah, we have to, we have to identify a permanent superintendent this year. I agree.
That's a goal you know you can achieve this year.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, no, we could infer it another year.
Yeah, that's true.
You'd never know in life. Let's say, let's say we hope so.
Yes, so I think that's.
That is a really good one.
That's a good one, yeah.
Yeah, so why don't we change number three?
So new goal three is hire a permanent superintendent?
That's easy peasy.
Hire a permanent superintendent.
Yeah, I like something that's concrete. I'm so A H E M with that.
Concrete, but I also, I also like the idea of a little bit of a challenge or, I don't know.
How are we going to use these surveys?
You know, um, set a positive tone for the district through increased communication of. Or, yeah, or through.
Effective.
Yeah, but basically, um, you know, it's the, it's sort of the theory, you heard this at OSBA, where the, the theory of from a PR standpoint, you can never control the narrative. That doesn't exist anymore. But you can build up, um, positive goodwill in your community such that when negative stories come, they don't stick or they don't cause as much trouble because people already have a positive view of the things you do. So we as a board, if we increase our positive communication, um, in a way where we're, we're the cheerleaders for this school district. We're like, hey, this is where we are, but look, we are going to the stars. We're, we're going to do a great job.
Is this like invest in, invest in the time or, or strategies to promote effective communication in order to, um, continue to sustain or produce or make or create a collaborative.
Positive.
Positive culture. Perfect. Damon, did you get that?
No, that's too many words.
It's a lot of words, but I start with a lot.
So can we put that in number two and say, complete community student survey twice a year as a way to gather input from our constituents? And use that information to positively communicate with our constituents.
Effectively.
Effectively, yeah, with our constituents.
To gather input and don't use constituents twice.
I kind of like the idea too of saying something that is about impacting, um, the culture of the district itself. I mean, internally impacting that positive culture.
What about?
But how do we measure that?
Damon does a good job.
Well, some of these things we are going to measure anecdotally and some we're not. I mean, the survey is going to give us all kinds of data.
Damon's got something. What's her?
So, yeah, I, I didn't catch this, but the recording did because I was working on one over here. How about by the end of the 24, or I guess it's 25, 26 school year, the board will improve district culture by implementing a strategic communication plan that increases transparency, celebrates successes, and builds trust amongst all stakeholders.
And we can't use stakeholders anymore. It's politically incorrect now. Constituents is a word. You need to use constituents now.
Yeah, and you can't use master bedroom.
What is?
It's primary.
What?
There's a lot of words.
Honest question, what is this stakeholder?
Stakeholder is, goes back to basically Native American as well as slavery and.
They held a stake.
Yeah.
Someone was attached to a stake.
Like tied in. And so that's what people envision. So just FYI, words are changing every day, every second, so just kind of keep ourselves apprised of that.
I, I had not heard that one, but I will absolutely change it to constituents.
Yeah, I heard it at OSBA like two years ago. I've been hearing it a lot. Yeah.
Okay.
Can you read it again or maybe type it on the screen?
I love that, Damon. You're so good at that.
Oh, I, I, I use AI.
I know.
But you're welcome.
But yeah, Roger, I call AI Roger.
Can we, I don't know, we could say it through or we could say impact positively. District cultures.
But are we saying that the district culture is bad?
Well, there's always room for improvement.
Yeah.
Wayne Grexky improved. He was a great.
District culture, but I don't understand what improve district culture means. That's one of those.
It's like what Dr. Rogowski just said. It means like when we've got, we have a culture of positivity that a negative story doesn't automatically stick when someone throws it at us. They're really, you know, you've got it layered to where you've got positive, um, affirmations and stories and narratives out there in a community of teachers and administrators and school policies and whatnot out there.
It's unfortunately, it's, it's an unfortunate.
Yeah.
But it's, but it's something that most experienced educators, when they walk into a school and meet with a few people, will automatically be able to accept.
What if, what if we softened it by the board will focus on district culture? And let's get, I don't know about a strategic communication plan because that means somebody has to write it down.
That's the word that was giving me.
So if we focus on, on district culture by, um, not implementing a plan, but.
Strengthening. Supporting. What about supporting an effective communication?
Communication?
And.
How are we going to strengthen that?
Yeah, exactly.
Can we support positive and effective communication between our administrator and our staff?
No, but we can have positive communication.
Yeah, and through, well, Gary. Yeah, because he's going to be the one we direct, right?
Aligning. Aligning with, um, district goals.
But this isn't the street ball, so it shouldn't be aligned with itself.
I was thinking of the superintendent's goals. This is our goal. Focus our district culture. We want to align by taking the time to, to look into this, to help them, to support it.
Take out, take out plan and take out strategic. We want to, we want to support. We're not going to implement anything, but.
But strategic communication, that doesn't mean we have to make one. It just means that it will be strategic and it will be a communication plan. You can expect the superintendent to figure that out.
We could collaborate, so we're going to put that as one of his goals. Do you already have that as a goal, Gary?
Um, I have a lot of the same goals as last year, but I wanted to talk about a, a goal on climate with a survey and gathering results and a goal on, uh, expectations through the state accountability measures.
And your PLC is a, is a lot of really communication plan in many ways.
Right. The.
We're not going to implement that, but we can collaborate.
I'm going to have to be totally contrary. One of the things I don't like is, is going to something, um, saying like focus. Focus doesn't get anybody excited. If you're going to improve, that gets people excited. Like, if people wanted to do something, focusing on something just means we're looking at it, no?
Well, I was reacting to it while it was, thinking maybe that implied.
Implied, right, and.
So want to put us in a goal that we're not.
Improve is a great word.
We can, we can improve. We can support the district in improving, right? And we'll be like.
And we can, and we can, and we can ask that, that Gary helped, help us measure this by those surveys that are going to go out to students and staff. If our students and staff, if at the beginning of the year, we have X, X number of positives, the district is on the right path. We have 59% of people say the district is on the right path. And at the end of the year, we have 79% of people say the district is on the right path.
That's better.
We made a big improvement.
Read that one. I think that's.
That's good.
Yeah, that's, I like this one. By June 2025, the board will champion a positive district culture by creating a robust communication framework that builds trust, uh, fosters transparency, and consistently celebrates student and scout successes.
Through. Except for that we're not going to be creating.
I was just going to say that. I would change it to.
Collaborate with the district staff or whatever.
I would probably.
Or supporting.
Or support.
I will support.
By supporting a robust.
I would say supporting because we're not. And then, um, can we say that we're doing that through, partially through the data collected through the two surveys on number two?
What?
Just add it to it.
Together.
Yeah.
I can see it's more separate. That's fine. Have two different goals.
Yeah.
Well, isn't it that we're, this is how we're measuring that goal, right? Because we have to gather the data for the, this is how we're doing it, correct?
And are we supposed to have measurable data for each one?
Not necessarily.
I mean, can, can one be one that we have to press on at the end of the year and go, well, we didn't get there because.
Yeah, they can be the hornless and.
You know, we got triage a bunch of stuff, so we never got to that.
Our goals in the past have always been pretty measurable. Yeah. And, and that was like kind of one of the sticking points with the social emotional goal. I don't know.
There's two sides of evaluation.
Yeah.
And this more subjective than the other.
Absolutely.
And we can do that by just checking with the board. How are we more supportive? What did you do to be more supportive? You can gather that kind of information and it is just as valid as yes and no on a answer sheet. This wording is better.
Yeah, this is better wording.
All right, let's just.
The way I, I kind of see this as a goal is maybe using the same framework that we're asking our schools to use with sprinkles. Is this is the overarching goal. This quarter, we're going to do that through surveys. Next quarter, we're going to do that through, you know what I mean? We have sub-goals that achieve this goal, and that's where we find the measurable data. But this is the overarching that kind of pims in it.
Sorry, we decided today.
Yes.
Well, you guys vote on it.
On Monday.
On Monday.
So we haven't had the time to act, we haven't had much time to actually work on these goals or create any sub-strategies.
What, what, has anybody sent out our goals from last year?
Once again, we're moving really fast on really important things.
We do that every year.
I know, and I'm just, I'm just.
But you can, we can also change this just because we set them down.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm just noting that they're moving. I wonder when it's a good idea to slow down.
Well, we.
Not this today.
We could, because we've done this in the past, we just, oh, yeah, we continue just the same goals that we've had. I mean, we've done that before.
Well, we don't have to adopt them on Monday. You guys get to decide when you adopt your goals. It's just been practiced that we have adopted.
Didn't we change that policy?
What?
Because we used to have a policy, I think we might have changed it though, that said we would adopt that, I remember it being saying by September or maybe it said August. And then I think Adrian and I were talking about that one year, like 2019. And we said, could we have it say the beginning of the year? We changed it. We wanted to be in compliance.
Well, that's, that is important. I also think it would be wonderful to spend just 15 minutes discussing, you know, these are, these are a big deal.
If it doesn't say that.
And doing it in just a few minutes is. Kind of cheats us of the opportunity to really create goals that we feel.
There's no timeline, Kim. It just says goals will be adopted by the board consistent with the goals adopted by the State Board of Education. Goals will be reviewed annually and revised as.
When does, when would that change?
2012.
Do we review our goals except once a year?
Harvey?
How often do we review the goals except once a year?
Every board meeting, isn't it?
Justin kept it.
Every board meeting.
So that there's some tracking.
Yeah.
In, in almost all of Justin's superintendent reports, there was a slide that was progress towards goals. Towards goals.
That's really great.
Both his and the board's.
Yeah, we do go over them every single month.
Wait a second, wait, so let me, I'm getting lost here. Remind me, the board goals, but then where, where did the goal for extending old to ed come in? Was that superintendent goal? Okay, we're not there yet. I needed to, I needed to separate and clarify. Thank you.
What you're responsible for are board goals. What he's responsible for are superintendents.
Well, maybe I shouldn't have thrown this one out because I don't understand.
Maybe everybody needs to look at superintendent goals as well, like push this on pause and then look at superintendent goals.
Okay.
We want it easy, right? Like not, not easy, but easy to understand and clear so that public can say, oh, I see what they're.
And there's goals and there's visions.
Exactly.
And maybe I'm talking about something that's not necessarily a checkbox goal.
I know.
These were last year's, and then you've got new ones for this year?
Well, what I want to do is like on number one.
These are superintendent goals, right?
These are superintendent goals from last year. Um, and for example, number one, raise the academic expectations of the district. I wanted to put something in there about, oh, oh, raise the academic expectations of the district with alignment purpose. The state accountability measures, which are third grade reading, eighth grade math, ninth grade on track, four and five year graduation rate. So expanding this first goal to now include. So expanding this first goal to now include the accountability measures that are coming from the state. There's still a local metric to be decided, but those are the statewide growth metrics. So I want to expand this first goal and say, raise the academic expectations of the district with alignment to the state accountability metrics of.
Of them, bro. Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Are we raising expectations or scores?
Good question.
Expectations aren't.
I'd say expectations and outcomes.
Right.
Because we're doing both.
Okay. I think Justin was really focused on the expectations because he felt, or he portrayed that he felt that some of our staff had lower expectations of students. I think that was true though. I, I do think that was true.
And that's two separate things. There's people who have expectations and then there's scores that get higher.
Right. Or also, his first step was believing, having staff believe that their students could do better was a huge obstacle that we talked about. That might be a separate goal.
You want to go on, Gary?
Yeah, and so I don't feel like we accomplished goal number two last year. Of having a long-term plan for the future alternative ed and.
I met a lot about this goal.
What's that?
I said I've met Justin, Dr. Answorth, a lot about this goal, um, and called him and talked to him because even if it's, I told him, just even, he would talk about it every month. But a long-term plan doesn't mean that it has to be finished tomorrow.
Right.
Because it was just, I think it was just too much, but I wanted a plan in place, even if it's five years, ten years, I want a plan. I want to see what it is, and it, it can be moving, it can, you know, we can change it up, but I wanted something in place.
Yeah, it's kind of like a long-term range, a long-term facility plan, which is a long-term alternative education plan. So I feel like I want to keep this goal there.
Goal. I'm going to champion this goal till the day I die.
I, I had you in mind, Kim. Uh, no, but.
But that's a really big goal.
It is.
It is a big goal.
You can't do that one by yourself.
But it's, it's.
No, but, but.
Long-term plan.
You would need a structure to help you with that.
Hundred percent.
Yes.
This is a, this is an alternative education subcommittee.
Yes, yes, the subcommittee.
Yeah, but it's still, I need to, I need to, to prioritize scheduling, find the folks and start building.
And one of the conversations that, that we've had is that we've had a money coming into the district. We've had focus and motivation and energy put towards so many different programs for Alt Ed and these outliers have been neglected for years and years. I mean, before, we had great programs when Arnie was here, and through the years, it's just like they're on the back burner. These are, are those kids, those kids with the problems, those kids with behaviors. And I just want to make sure that we are focused and we don't lose momentum here, because if it's not there, it's going to be under the rug. It's going to be in the shadows.
I'll count on you to be on that subcommittee.
Well, and that's fine, but I think we do that. So I think we're in the process of doing that.
I mean, the point is, do we want to have, do we want to have a young program? We used to have that.
What? I'm sorry.
We used to have a young program. So kids who were parents at our school had a place to learn parenting skills and have a place to drop their kids off and work with. Our ambassador was the teacher. It was an amazing program for a long time. Then it just went away because we didn't have the people.
We had a.
So how do we have a vision of what, what, what a, a full alternative program looked like in our district?
Yeah, and how much it would cost and what you have to give up.
So I would like to keep that goal. I would like to keep that goal. I like to keep goal number three, two on goal number three as well, not three, two. Goal number three as well on reporting progress on goal monthly in the board meetings.
I'd like that.
Um, and, uh, number four, investigating and establishing for additional programs. I want to keep that goal as well because I feel like uh, we, I have told you CTE is a passion. I've told you that, that co-curriculars are a passion. Those are additional programs. There's a broad range of additional programs. But it is a passion of mine. Um, and then I wanted to add a, a goal around, um, around this climate and, um, uh, community and student surveys focused on school climate and student voice. Um, the results will be analyzed and shared with constituents within sixty days of each survey. Find, and findings will be used to inform district decision-making.
Board and constituent.
Yes, absolutely.
Would it be possible to just flush these out a little bit so that they're not, it's very shorthand. Investigate and establish a need for additional programs in the district. For example, the blah, 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 blah that you just said.
Yeah, for example, CTE.
If you go back up to number two, but we've complete the sentences, um, alternative education and could base cultures and prioritize the, I don't know, what is the full name of the destinations program?
Destinations.
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 Pre, pre-kindergarten program, teen parenting program, program. I don't know, resource link. It just, it.
Online school.
Online, it reads, um.
And prioritize the following programs.
Yes, and then actually list the whole name of the program. And if you mean childcare, what do you mean by childcare? Do you mean instant through toddlers? Do you mean preschool, after school?
Well, that would be.
I mean, I just, I'm just sort of, it, it's, just want it to be real clear as we can make it.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'll go back and clean those up.
Childcare used to come up whenever negotiations.
I'm sure.
Yes.
Teachers wanted childcare.
Of course they do.
I was surprised.
Okay, are we good? Are, are we good if I clean up those five goals and have them prepared for tomorrow?
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
For tomorrow, Monday.
Monday, sorry, Monday, Monday, Monday. Not, not Sunday morning. Sorry, Kim. Monday. I'll clean them up and get them ready for Monday.
I'm happy, I'm happy to do Sunday.
Written for the public.
For the public, not just us.
Okay. Are we going back to board goals or do we?
Yeah, now this, having reviewed superintendent goals now, does that allow you to look any closer at what we set for board goals?
Usually, we don't want a ton of goals that I don't know, I don't know, maybe historic, historic, when we did one or two, last year we went to three because it was super easy. And then we already changed that bottom one though, didn't we?
Yeah, we're taking it out.
Yes.
We already changed that to something else.
Yes, this is a PDF. I can just add it on the fly. I'm going to go back and listen to the video and type out what, what we've discussed.
Do you want to keep it simple for the sake of time? I completely understand, but I would, I would like to make a note that we discuss spending more time on goals and the difference made in function and the difference made in goal and the strategic outcome.
We could do that. We could pick up one goal at every meeting, say, and.
If there's no.
Justifying. That foundational work is.
Yeah, we could just do that. We wouldn't have necessarily goals for the year established, but we would have working.
Well, we could, we could easily have picked the three goals, even though, and then.
We're going to.
Make sure that every meeting, we're going to have a, a time in the line to have a conversation to flesh out what that goal really means.
Okay.
I mean, to hold ourselves accountable.
Right.
So that we're supporting his.
Well, and according to the policy here, it, it says that goals will be adopted by the board consistent, but goals will, will be reviewed annually and revised if needed. So it's not indicating you have to have new goals every single year.
Yeah.
So it would behoove us to spend some time and set some goals, and that's likely what happened, why you continue to use the same goals in the past, or they were good goals.
They're good goals. Why don't, why would we ever change goal number one? I mean, it is the whole purpose of the school.
Until like, what was it, the twenty-three, twenty twenty-three? So for four, five years, we had the social emotional goal. And it applied even when we went to online even more. We just adapted that to meet obstacle settings.
Okay, so what, what did we, we said we'd like number one, we like number two. What did we say number three was?
I don't know. We did.
Um.
We did.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, it's higher permanent superintendent.
That's right. And then what was number four? Was this last one?
Well, we discussed. You want to end up as numbers.
I think three goals is all.
Three? Okay, perfect.
I just think it's, I think if we don't talk about goals and visions and share with each other as time and history changes.
Yep.
We become. We don't change too.
I agree with that. I mean, I think the, the, we, we sitting on this board are the attitudes in the district are going to reflect our leadership. So we are not showing a, that our goals are important, that we discuss our goals, that we measure ourselves against our goals, and that our goals are, we're picking goals because they are quickly or easily attainable. Like that's not, uh, the message we want to send to our staff. We want people to set difficult goals and put in work to get there, and we should model that as a body.
Right.
So I think what Justin wanted, and I think whenever we have these goals, is to support his superintendent goals. So while we support those goals, we are doing these goals. And he wanted to have a clear message from the board to all the staff that we wanted to improve academically, that we wanted to make sure that we were getting student and community input, and that we were going to keep up to date on our.
Training and requirements.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. And they were brought up every month in Justin's still. So are, are we suggesting instead of being in his report that we would have board goals separate as a separate agenda item or?
Under board items.
I don't think we're suggesting that at this point, but that's a possibility.
I thought we were.
I think if it's, if they're the board goals, I think it would, I'm not still there as a word of the hoop, but it would behoove you, behoove our board to have that as a board item, not a superintendent report item.
Right, because he reports.
I will have my superintendent goals every month in the board, in the superintendent report.
We would just need to allocate time for that under board items, like put that on there and limit the conversation.
Okay, well, wait a minute, wait a minute, before you start changing our agenda. Thank you. Um. How are we going to discuss, complete a community survey? So that's our issue to discuss for the day. What do we discuss about it?
Well, I think we say, hey, how's it going on those community?
Exactly. We're looking over at him again. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, I, gosh, I, I, I didn't get to it.
No, I understand that. That's the point I'm trying to make. There are goals, but we're not.
But then you could say, what could we do to help you support that goal?
Okay, but that's again.
Goals in general.
But it's, but all of our goals are going to be to support.
Okay.
That's what we do.
And this is still the goal we want.
I think what I'm asking for, Addie, is taking a little more time to have general conversation that is not necessarily action-oriented, but is this the goal we really want? And then that gives people an opportunity to say, well, I've been thinking about this, or I'm worried about that, or a teacher reached out to me. And so I've been thinking about how, and I think, I think we're kind of missing the mark. I'm, I'm trying to, I, I know that everybody wants probably short, effective meetings, but I think that time, there's some time for deliberation, collaboration, for the next, there'd be times, so keep me out of the weeds. But that, um, that generative, putting some generative, um, time into these foundational structures that are supposed to help steer the whole boat.
Yeah, I, I fully agree that we should have those conversations. I just don't know that every meeting is the time to do that.
Well, I, I don't know either. I, I'm just, no, I guess my observation is how quickly things are happening, and it seems there's a lot that would, might be productive and informative to.
Well, this is a work session.
This is a work session.
So I don't know a better time. I mean, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I want to be respectful of everybody's, and if anybody knows me, I don't love super long meetings and I check out after a little while, but I just want to say, A, I feel very strong about one and two. And then I also though, along with what you were saying, is that even with the complete, a community student survey, I don't recollect, and, and this could be my memory. I don't recollect getting that data.
I do.
And so that's where like having it on the agenda is like, even if, like you said, if we go to Gary and Gary's like, oh, well, that is scheduled for this. Great, we move on. And then we know in January that he did the survey in September. The other thing that I want to talk about with really quick, the student survey, and David, don't hate me for this, is that the seed survey is an organ survey. I want nitty-gritty about Kusby School District. I want to know if our interventions are working according to our kids. Are our kids saying why they go to after-school tutoring or why they don't go to after-school tutoring? I want to know like district survey stuff, and I, I don't know if that was the intent before. Okay, and so I think seed survey is amazing, and I think that gives us important information. But along this survey, I would really like to see not a lot of like yes and nos, but like open-ended questions about Kusby School District. If we go back to a recording of last year, we did talk about that. Okay, and so that should be in the survey. I don't think it was, but yeah.
Could I say that right now, if we don't take the picture, we won't have one of our members there? You could crop me in. I don't care.
No, we're going to take a picture.
Yeah. Um, Ali, let me, uh, someone needs to move for a recess and.
Move for a recess.
I will second that.
For how long?
Fifteen minutes.
I know we were getting a picture today.
Yes.
Okay.
I call the question.
It's been moved and seconded.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting for, or that we what?
Resess.
Resess the meeting.
For fifteen minutes.
For fifteen minutes. All those in paper, say aye. Opposed? Passes. Opposed, passes. Have a great day, Ken. Okay. So are we happy with the, the goals?
One second. Oh, I'm sorry. What are we moving on to?
Are we back here? Um, we're going to, I, I just wanna check that everyone's okay with the goals that we came up with.
As long as we understand that they are always available for revision, and that we will have a conversation at least on one of them at each meeting.
Perfect. David had, had wordsmithed a goal replacement at number two.
Wait, what?
No, it was, it would have been an additional one.
See, I'm just not sure, I'm not sure we've actually clarified what the three or four things.
I think we decided to stay with three, was how I heard it.
But I think we, I'm hoping we could put a pin in this and keep it to talk about.
This one here.
This one.
Yeah.
That goal statement, yeah. We like that goal statement.
Put that as, put that as three A or.
Talk about it.
So, question, so is that still going to be, just for clarification of the agenda, is that gonna be board items to discuss, add to the agenda, or would it be still under superintendent's purview? To discuss, because I thought it was gonna be a board item.
To discuss.
It's up to Addie.
Yeah, I know, I don't wanna add a board item, so what do you think, Addie?
Well, the only concern I have is that board items are at the end of the agenda. And if it's eight thirty and we're just starting to discuss a goal, I know two board members who will probably check out. And I, so I'm a little concerned about that.
We could have, we could have a different agenda that says, just before the superintendent, we do a board goal.
We could do that.
Separate then.
That would be the only way I would consider doing so, because I think if we put it at the end, it just will be useless.
And the reality is, it says it's important for us, that our goals are important, it's at the beginning of the agenda, so I agree.
Okay.
The only people that I really appreciate Addie's comments and others is that if we have a legislative member that wants to come speak to us, we could do it.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we did that.
That's what I'm saying.
We've done that a couple of times.
Yeah, and it was a great thing, and even he said it was great.
I agree.
Because I talked to him afterwards.
He had his state for the whole board meeting, so he got to see what was going on.
Right.
And I thought, that was pretty cool.
Yeah, because he heard about good things that had happened and bad things, but things we needed help with.
Yep.
Okay, let's go on to board and superintendent working agreements. Um, I hope everyone had a chance to look at the old version. Um, and maybe we could just move on to the new version? And can you tell me where this came from?
The new version?
Yeah.
It came from me putting the old version into ChatGPT and asking it to condense but keep the main themes.
We were trying to get from three pages to two pages and condense it down so that it was a more manageable document.
I would, I would like to move that.
Pardon me?
I would like to move that we keep the new version.
The new version?
Yeah, we adopt the new version. Has everybody moved?
Well, I think we're just giving people a chance to read it again.
I think the reason we chose to, to do it that way is just the from advice from OSBA and COSA that agreements longer than two pages are, no one reads them, so they don't get followed. So, and there was nothing wrong with our agreement, it was a good working agreement, it just was too long.
It just needed to be succinct.
Yeah. Um, maybe somebody can clarify for me, number four, superintendent oversight, to me seems like ChatGPT, chat, GBT, TBT gibberish, I don't know what that means.
Under superintendent's role?
No, the superintendent oversight, number four.
Supervise the hiring, performance evaluation, and other personnel management processes for the superintendent. Work with the superintendent as a team recognizing them as opposed to their supervisor.
The superintendent can't give superintendent oversight to his own.
After that.
That's you. Yeah, that's.
Us, we supervise the, we oversee the superintendent.
No, no, but this is saying supervise the hiring, performance evaluation, and other personal management processes for the superintendent. That's his job.
Yeah, that's his job.
But are there, would there be, personnel management to me is HR. Are there HR management processes that the board might not be involved in?
Well, yeah, but we're, we're talking about for him, right?
Yes, but for him, why he don't take HR for something that would involve us.
But we're talking about like.
Uh, that's where the of is, of the superintendent, not for the superintendent.
Yeah, of the superintendent.
And then.
So if someone comes to us about the superintendent, which we have had happen, we've had in the past recently, personnel issues with the superintendent.
But this one, this personnel appeal is, he, he's in the process of firing a teacher.
No, 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 that's why we need a place.
No, but we still oversee that. We will have to approve it.
Well, yes, that is true.
No, I mean, so those are the other kinds of things that he's gonna do, he's gonna want our input.
Does that make sense? But Derek had two examples that are firing a teacher of his own.
His own evaluation.
His own personnel management, right?
Yeah.
And we do oversee both technically, like Art said.
Those of the superintendent, not for the superintendent, in this word.
Yeah, that's true.
So, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it makes sense. The, um, yeah, it makes sense. Not sure it's the, knows what to say, but I'm not, not fully about it.
Would it be helpful if I, uh, wordsmithed that one a little bit, sent a draft out to all of you to just kind of gain a consensus and then?
Sure.
Sure. Add that edit when we adopted our next meeting?
Yep.
Okay, I can do that.
Thanks for catching that, because it didn't make sense.
Yeah, ChatGPT can be dangerous.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, um, yeah, this, yeah.
Okay. Are there any other items? Is the board in a position to adopt these?
No.
We would do this Monday?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I need to.
Well, is the board in a position to adopt them on Monday? Yes?
With plaid words.
Okay. Hearing no opposition, I think we move on to the next agenda item. Which is, oh, I love this.
Board meeting procedures and.
Board meeting procedures and protocols.
Thank you for this.
Yes.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Uh, I had to, I, you all would have got one like Addie's, but I realized most of it was board chair speaking.
Correct.
And it, I didn't have that size of paper, or laminations.
We don't necessarily need it.
Yeah, so when anyone else's board chair, Addie will have to give up her placemat.
We'll trade.
Oh, she's got the placemat.
I got the place. Okay.
I realized when we were doing this, that that's not the ones I use the most, because Mason's rules are the ones that legislature do that. So I had to run Mason's.
Really?
So no seconds, you don't second anything if you second.
Oh, really?
Motion is the motion, so, and there's whole bunch of little subtle things.
So you just motion and it's off, and people either.
Motion made, you go on.
Wow.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, for this item, we really didn't have a ton today. I wanted to hand out these and, and make sure that we all, uh, understand. And obviously, this, this session is more informal than any of our other sessions are going to be. Uh, but we also have a, uh, OSBA-produced parliamentary procedure guide that I'd like to send out as a little homework assignment, that we reviewed that prior, well, I'm not gonna say prior to our next meeting, because that's a different day, but, uh, we reviewed that early this year, um, and tried to bring Robert into the room to our board meetings, as a matter of course, would, would be my only reason for.
Um, what I will try and do as we do the meetings is go around Robert, call on everyone to offer comment or opinion, feedback, um, and then we can move on, giving everyone an opportunity.
And attending the, uh, OSBA, uh, meeting that, that Kevin, David, or I, David and I were at, uh, was it, was an interesting experience, uh, but it was, uh, educational to hear, uh, from Janet OSBA about how important it is for Robert's rules and, um, like, and the liabilities that can get boards and superintendents in situations for not following it, and like roll call votes specifically, making sure that, that, you know, roll call votes and not just overall all in favors and things like that, because of those.
Yeah, we tend to do that on anything of substance and not just performative motions.
So, yeah, it was, it was a very informative, uh, evening.
And even on the, uh, like the consent agenda and things like those, it's, it's still not recommended by OSBA to do votes by acclamation. Even though I like it and it moves our meetings along quicker, uh, they still recommend a roll call vote. Part of that is because I have to record individual votes. Even, I can't just say anymore, it's by acclamation. So what the, the challenge becomes is if someone abstains, I, I don't know that from just hearing the ayes. Uh, so, so that would make it easier on me to do minutes. I have gone back and watched recordings and checked mouth movements, like, okay, everybody said aye. Uh, but it, but it is, it is there.
Okay, that's a good.
I think, I think it would personally be more helpful, especially with the consent agenda, because we found ourselves in a weird situation with the consent agenda with our superintendent. We'd already approved him going in the consent agenda before we had the conversation.
About getting, yeah.
And I, my understanding was there was going to be a statement given.
Yeah, that was my understanding too.
So then I kind of caught with my foot in my mouth in the consent agenda, but I expected there would be a statement at that meeting where he would explain, and then, and then it would be fine to vote on, uh, but that didn't happen. So in the future, I have noted, any superintendent resignations will not be in the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I watched the meeting again yesterday, I remember, I will make sure it's not.
Yeah, it was a good lesson.
And thank you for sending out the homework thing.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
Okay, let's move on to superintendent communication systems.
Have, have, have people felt comfortable, positive with the Friday board update emails that I've sent out?
I love them.
And when I've sent out, obviously, I didn't send one out yesterday because we're reading today. I hope everybody was okay with that as well.
I do appreciate.
And, okay.
Don't send out too many.
Okay, and, uh, I've tried to keep you guys informed, like via text, group text when we had the passing of unfortunate.
Yeah, that's what I wanna know from the board, is, is his communication of outside issues? If there's a, you know, someone gets hit by a car, or is, is.
The ambulance.
He doing a good job so far? Because I know we had complaints about Justin not giving us enough information so that we even understood what the situation was.
I do appreciate you.
It's okay at the beginning.
At the beginning, and then we talk to him.
But I, I mean, it's, it's, it's a difficult thing for a superintendent to know exactly what we wanna know and what we don't wanna know.
Well, we need to know the context of the situation. I wanna hear something's going on with Russell, but I don't know anything else.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I had a conversation with, when I had a conversation with Dr. Anesworth on the transition, he was very, um, this, you need to do this in communication, and I was like, okay. So, so, um, so has that message gone from him to me as well?
Good.
Uh, it's, it, uh, this, you know, individually, it's been, it's been working for me, and I appreciate, um, uh, text mess, uh, the text message for important or urgent things that are gonna be impacting the district. Um, my, my email is very much like mail, um, and it doesn't, it doesn't notify me on my phone. I don't read it, I actually don't even read it every day, and I know that's weird for an adult in the United States, but.
I agree, I agree.
I don't either.
Things like the situation last week, uh, school closures, if it were weather-related things, I will do those via text message so that it's right there in front of you.
I appreciate that.
Say things like reports on, you know, budget constraints, like I've done in the, in the weeklies, where I'm like, hey, just give you guys a heads up, we're gonna have some, some top extra. I'll save those for the.
And, and, and follow-up, like, I think, I think from the email or whatever, with, what you did with the student that died, when you wanna give us a lot more information, I don't care if that's an email. You can also put it in your text, check for an email later or something, so.
Okay.
If you wanna do a longer one.
Sure.
No, I think you did very, very well.
It was perfect.
My thoughts definitely got to, like, your, the parent and the family that lost.
I didn't realize till I looked a year later when, that this was one of your students. So that was, um.
Yeah.
And in that vein, do we know anything more?
No. I haven't heard.
Sessions, I just.
Yeah.
I have condolences.
Yes, absolutely. And I was, I was gonna say, I was gonna say it on, on Monday, um, but yeah. Sincere condolences to, to Addy's family and, um. Uh, yeah, we've extended to the family anything they need to. Uh, any support they need, anything we can do to help out, we've taken steps to help support the family with, with some of the other students, so.
Perfect, yeah. So Diane, softball, do you know her through softball? Didn't.
No, I didn't, she's a little bit younger, yeah, no, but it broke my heart.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Having lost a child, does it even work when they're that young?
I know, we're moving through this, can I ask a quick question? Go back to board meeting for figure of protocols?
Yeah.
So sometimes what happens is we have a public comment section. Sometimes people come in here and they have very legit. Things, some people just wanna vent and they just wanna be heard. And then there's some things that really need to be actionable items.
Like the baseball team.
Or like our properties, which I already talked to Gary about. But then what happens is we can't discuss back, we, we, we don't answer questions in that session. And then sometimes. Where does that get back onto the agenda or where does that get decided that that needs further discussion? Or does that just because it's not a board issue, does that fall back on your plate? And then you report back to us on something like, where do you find out that's true concern?
I know there were several times. I shouldn't say several times, the, the instances that came in that reflected on. Milicoma or K six that were brought up in public comment, Justin would follow up with that admin group about it. I don't know if that information got back to the board, but he would at least check in with us if it was needed to, to say, hey, you know, this came up in public comment. Can you address it?
Yeah, cause sometimes I, we just don't, I don't know what happens with it, I hear it because, and they want the board to hear it, right? Cause that's why they're here, but then. The closing of the.
Yeah, it would be nice if we heard about.
And, and many times, and, and many times when, when we've had those conversations. He would, you know, hey, can you, can you give me some clarity? Yep, here you go, and he's like, okay, perfect, thanks, appreciate it, makes sense.
Informational email out, sometimes it would just be in your Friday deal, you know, hey, we heard about this. Um, I talked to these people and maybe we just don't need any other details than that.
Well, and I think a perfect example though was the baseball guy who came in. And then the next meeting, we heard from Justin that they had set up a meeting and this is how they were going ahead with it. So that we at least knew it was being addressed and it was public comment that it was being addressed.
Yep.
Okay, well, maybe I was just missing something, but sometimes that happens.
And that's an important thing with committees, we run that, we run that in the hospital all the time.
Yeah.
You know, we, we have a patient care situation that is brought up in a committee and then we assign. Somebody or someone to follow up on it and they, and they do follow up on it, you know, more than nine times out of 10, because people do that. But then the loop never gets close to the committee.
Yeah.
Same idea, same idea.
Yeah, okay, I'll make sure that when. Public comment happens and I go talk to, uh, whoever I need to chat with, that. I close that loophole back, went back with you guys on what.
Even if it's in, I mean, if it's not a big issue, even if it's in your weekly.
Yeah, absolutely, right.
Newsletter.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Nope, that's good.
No, that's a great question.
That was the best comment of the day.
I think.
Okay.
Arnie really wants me to feel good today.
That's right, he's doing good.
That's right, positive communication.
Okay, COSA OSBA joint evaluation handbook.
So I talked with, with Addy and, and when we were talking about the superintendent, um. Uh, when we were calling over kind of the super, the, the components of my interim contract, I voiced that I'd really like to be. Um, evaluated using the COSA OSBA evaluation, because it didn't seem like we had a tool per se. Like you, I know you guys had a, a mechanism where you're doing the evaluation, but.
It was through OSBA's.
Is it this exact evaluation?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic, cause when I talked to Addy, she was saying, I'm not sure if that's what we use, so. Is this what we're using?
Yes.
Well then fantastic, this is a quick, that's the quickest agenda item on the, that's cool.
I don't think she's had to do an evaluation yet because of the.
We've changed every time since I've been here.
Perfect.
Yeah, it's a good tool too.
Yeah, no, it's great, it's joint, it's joint, but, okay, excellent, there you go, look at that, check.
Well, that was that, a quick agenda item, okay. So let's move on to our next agenda item, which is the radio oversight committee. Can you just tell the background of that a little bit, why we're looking?
Who, okay, so, um. Part of, we've had some, obviously had some radio station turnover and management and things of that nature. Ultimately, and David, I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, because you have more, more history of this and on Arnie, Arnie too. The board is ultimately, the, the board is ultimately the owners of the radio station and.
Arnie set that up.
Yeah.
I accept.
Tony, you may be better to speak, so why don't I, why don't I pass the history, you know, give us the history and kind of where we're at.
So one of our Christian radio stations had a radio station that they were. Didn't want to have.
A frequency?
It was a dawn to dusk radio station and they just didn't, they wanted 24 hours, so. They came to the college and asked them if they wanted a radio station and the college looked at it and said, no. So then they came to the high school and said, do you want a radio station? And I said, that'd be cool, it looks like a radio station and we're a pirate, so the pirate radio station, that goes really well with everything radio station life. So I went to the superintendent and said, can I take this radio station, I really want it? And he said, okay, but you're gonna have to deal with it, I said, okay. So, um, in the midst of that, a local radio's family, um, Steve Walker. Um, and his family owned radio stations forever, came by and said, I hear you're taking over a radio station, I would love to help manage it for you. Which I said, oh, that would be really great. Um, can't pay much for that, but you can raise money from the radio station, have kids to do ad. And, and you can't do ads, because we were, it was a public radio station, it made it a little more difficult, because you can only do it, whatever. But we ended up with a really amazing guy from Eugene, who was the person that, um, was our technical advisor. And he said, you know, they don't really have dawn to dusk radio station anymore, you just have to send an application that it'll be 24 hours. You don't have to lower the frequency, so. We said, okay. So we took it and all of a sudden we got us equipment and all this kind of stuff and we started running a radio station. We hired a couple of people to sell our. Ad things for it and gave them various good contracts, gave them most of the money. Um, but we started building this radio station and then lightning hit our tower and. It fell and we were very concerned and then we found out that. And the radio station found out that. They had given us all the equipment and plus a building over on East Side, but they had not given us the tower. So when it fell, it wasn't our problem. So the school board liked that, um, so then we put a new tower that you can see out, out there in the. And that's causing us some issues now, but. We had the same people working on it for a long, long time and we had a lot of kids that went through it and became radio people. I mean, it's been pretty amazing how good it has been for us and. And it was, it was serendipitous that the phone number, five four one two six seven six six oh, I can't remember what it was now. But it was one that we already had and we wanted it to be. Uh, have our pirate radio station have the same number on it and all that kind of stuff. And so when we checked with the coast guard where this original radio station came from. It couldn't be a W, which is what it was, had to be a K, so we ended up with all the numbers that we wanted and everything right and lying. And so we've had this station going for a while and the. Board kind of accepted it was just the high schools, wasn't there, but it was, always was, the only one that could own it was the school board. Um, so we had to have FCC people back in Washington. You see all these different people that have to work to make it work and we have the requirements that you can't be down for any length of time. Um, because that's part of the FCC thing, so if you, stuff breaks down, you gotta fix it instantaneously and all that kind of stuff. So it was all going well and then we decided that. Our person retired, both of them, actually the person that took over after Steve Walker was one of his students, um, who worked at the college. Um, and is now back with Argus Group, I guess. Um, or my guardian son, um. And so we ended up with this whole thing and now all of a sudden our new guy that we hired, who actually did a lot of really good things with respect to getting us lined up. The FCC and getting other things on it, he actually let go all the other people that had been there for a long term, but didn't make it go well with some of the community people for a while. So created some other kinds of issues. Kevin and I, um, are on the. Um.
Committee.
You gotta have a committee, it's a, it's a vocational program, so you have to have a group of people who are local people be on the board and. We went to a couple of meetings, I haven't seen a meeting for a while, so I don't know when the last meeting until, but. Now we had to hire some new people and. In conversations with, with Eli and the others, there were two people who both looked like they would be good for different reasons. So one, the young person would be really great in the classroom, the other person would be great. And the techn, it's the technical part of running the radio station. Part of the reason that Jones left was because he was overwhelmed, I mean, it's, it's his job. And then they both do full-time jobs and you don't get any summer off, because it's 24 hour radio station, so. And when you have kids there, they can do a lot of the stuff when school's on action. You had to work to get kids to wanna come in on the summer and do it, so it, it, it makes it a difficult thing. Uh, I don't know what the final resolution came, I think we hired the young person to run the classroom. We moved the classroom out of the building that's falling apart into a classroom in the building. Um, they also do all of our student announcements go through the radio station, um, so. That has been an interesting thing, because we do a DVD and radio portion of it. We have bought mostly new equipment, I think there's still some stuff that needs to have on the tower, but, um. It is, I think, a real advantage to our schools if they have it, um, we used to do. Football games and all that kind of stuff over that one and a Copeel radio station that we jointly worked together. And I don't know, lately we've just been doing it online. Um, but it did a whole lot of really great things, one of the things that I always thought was so fun is we do, we, they would come in and do the whole graduation at Marshall High School. And put it online and our foreign exchange parents would call us and say, it was so fun to watch my kid. Over here in Poland, graduating and walking across the stage in Kuzbe, because we had all this stuff happen, so. It has some really interesting advantages and because it's a radio station. We would get these really amazing letters from Finland and Iceland and whatever saying, we tuned into your radio station. Low levels, radio signals bounce off the, yep, and can end up all over the world. And so we would get these fun little letters from all around the world saying, it was really great to hear your radio and your kids. So it has a real value, I think, we upgraded the equipment over the years. Um, and now that we're selling our own ads, it actually can make a fair amount of money, um, for yourself. But getting all that organized is something that's really important and we do need to have some more oversight over the whole thing as time goes on.
And just in case anybody, because this was my perspective for a little bit until I went and kind of, I was like, radio field outdated. But they're doing podcasts and podcasts is very current and it's very much the thing and. The videos and then they've done some radio at the games and things like that, so they are current, because I, I, when I was thinking of radio, I was like.
We have more radio stations on the coast than any other place in the state of Oregon.
Quietly outdated and our, you know, we have streaming services by the way. They keep up with the times.
I mean, I know I'm old, but the music selection on the, on the country station's great.
Yeah. They, they, they do, the kids do an amazing job of managing and running the station and I, I just think. Even though it's an older field, the skills you learn by doing it.
That's right.
Recognizing a chart for the day and recognizing that you have to send that to the FCC, they need to know exactly what you're doing every day of the day, you gotta keep along. I mean, it is all detailed information that is great for any person to understand. What's the, what's the. Why are we having this discussion, what's, what's the decision we have?
We have to designate a radio oversight committee and I just was.
We have one, don't we, that?
Well, we have, we have the committee, that's the technical stuff. But we've never had an oversight committee from the board with respect to the radio station.
Yeah.
Well, I designate Arnie.
Well, yeah, and Kevin also wants.
And Kevin, no, Kevin's been very involved, his kids are with it too.
Yeah.
Kevin knows it from the perspective of parents.
I would like to make a motion to have Arnie and Kevin. Consulted the oversight committee for in which it's radio.
I'll second.
Station.
Does that need a motion?
Yes, it's an action item.
It is an action.
We want a motion and a second.
Is there any further discussion?
How many, just a bit of discussion, how many are needed for this committee?
So how big do you want the committee and do we want, we want people from the community on the committee as well, that's, I guess that is a good question to ask, so I would say. Five people, I think.
Five to seven or something, no more than that.
Yeah, okay.
So it would be then in the purview of Kevin and Arnie to figure out how to get the others.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go out and solicit the other people, I know that Steve Walker has.
Oh, that's great.
Talked to me many times about anything he can do to help and I think there's other people, I also think that Mr. Jones. That now works with the district might be willing to be a person on that oversight committee, because he actually had to run it for a long time and he's. Kinda knows some stuff, so we've got people in the community who I think have talents and. Walker has a family history in our community with radio that goes back 75 years or whatever, so, um, I think he could help us. Mend some of the fences that were broken with the last person, did we hire both people?
We've hired for both people, but the.
One doesn't start till.
Yes, the manager is still into the month, yeah.
But he is, but he is, he has accepted that position.
I believe so, I can.
That's really exciting.
I thought I had heard that.
I thought, I thought I heard that too, but I, I was waiting to hear, but I hadn't.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that Arnie and Kevin. Um, be named to the radio oversight committee, Diane?
Aye.
Maybe.
Are we done with discussion?
Oh.
She's seconded.
I'm sorry.
Discussion, we had questions.
Did you have further discussion?
I just had, I had some questions, so Arnie, you had mentioned, uh, that the radio station, uh, can sell ads and is, uh, profitable. If we as the board are responsible for that, what, how do those profits get allocated to committee that you're talking about? Um, forming, when does it report to the board? So currently, we haven't had this committee forever, so.
Yeah.
Uh, in the past, the radio station managed the money, they came in, we paid, uh, a person for about 50% of the ads they brought in and kept them going, so it didn't cost anything. Uh, it goes to Marina, she has a radio fund that she has to make sure that it gets balanced and is audited like everything else. Um, the hopeful anticipation in the future is that. It will, uh, continue to be one, help pay for the person that's running the manager of the station, not necessarily the teaching position, but the managing position. Um, and that one goes for you, so that kind of stuff and, and depending, we have two different radio stations. So one is a public radio station, so we can't have ads, so the kids get to learn what's the difference between an ad and a. I can't remember what they call them, but. Thank the sponsors, underwriting.
Yeah.
Thank NDR.
NDR, that's right.
And the other one is a regular, a regular radio station that we applied for and it took us about five years to finally get the FCC to agree that we were the best applicant to. Receive it, so we received this regular private radio station, so it can sell ads and do all the kinds of stuff with any radio station. And so we have two radio stations, two different kinds of management, which is really great for kids, because they get to see both sides of the whole thing. But all the money that comes in goes to Marina and I think now is a good time to, to change the structure. So that anybody that gets paid over that gets paid through Marina and the office, I, I don't know if they did that in the very past, I believe so, okay. But originally, I think it was just kinda like, you sell the ad, we'll give you 50% of the money, it, it was kinda loose for a little while, but I think.
Are there policies?
We don't have any radio policies.
State wide?
No, there's only two radio stations that are run by kids, one is in Sheldon High School and the other is ours.
Maybe we should develop some.
Our own policies, we probably should.
Yeah.
But, um, but the reality is money is the thing that'll get most people in trouble the soonest, so we try to keep that pretty solid and Marina does a really great job.
And it's a line item of the budget when she presents.
So as I understand it, we're, um, appointing Arnie and Kevin to. Sort of start up this committee, set up the guidelines, the procedures, and then report back to us about what's going on.
Absolutely.
Is that, is that fair?
Yeah, yeah, I, I just, I wanted to make sure that we had the, the report back, yes, and that we understood the financial implications of. Of having both a public and private radio station being supervised by the board. Yep. Thank you. And we'll figure out more of those things as we go along and, and hopefully the person that is gonna come in the future. Has real radio experience, so he's the one that we are gonna depend on to make sure that the FCC stuff goes. We lost Robin, who was the techni- technician, um, and so that's sad one for me, Robin was really a pretty. Interesting human being, so his hair went down to his back, he was very much the Eugene kind of person he was coming from. And, but he would do. And, but he would do, my greatest educational advantage, one of the things he did, we got hit by lightning and blew up our station. Robin came over, says, I need a couple of kids to go with me over to the site to take care of it. They go over. He says to the kid, looks at this burned out stuff on the wall and says, okay, kids, I'm gonna give you a job. Go out in my trunk and there's a World War II Waki Taki. And he said, so let's get the Waki Taki. He brought it in, puts it on the table, started pulling wires out of the wall, stuck them in his Waki Taki, put duct tape and wrapped the Waki Taki on and said, we're back online.
Keep a diaper in.
Yeah, and the kid says, how are we online? Well, we don't have as much power as we used to have, but we are meeting the requirement of the FCC to be online. And your job is you gotta come over every four and a half hours and change the batteries in this machine. And they said, how is that possible? So then he goes on to explain, radio is radio and here's how all this works. And they came back and the kid said, how did you know this? And he said, that's what education can do for you. And the kids came back and they were not our brightest and best, but they were great workers. They come back and these kids said, what did you do? He said, we found out what education will do for you.
Okay, so we're going, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Diane?
I.
Maybe.
I.
Arnie?
I.
Here.
I.
Kim? Chair votes aye.
We'll make Kevin the chair.
Pardon me?
I'll make Kevin the chair. Since you advised.
He'll like that.
Yep.
Okay, our second item is that we need to designate the address of this building as our
Oh, that's true.
District Office because right now, if you look it up, it sends you over to Hemlock, so.
This is, this is an ODE item because David cleaned up our, our ODE forms and who are titles and who's who and who's that. But until we designate the address, they won't process.
So did we also make you the person that's on all their paperwork now? Has that been done with
Yes, yes, yes.
So I will move that we designate a new address, 333 South Tenth Street, Kusby, Oregon 9700, as the district office.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Diane?
I.
Maybe.
I.
Arnie?
I.
Derek?
Hi.
Kim?
I.
Chair votes aye. Okay, you can make that change. Also, I did Google Sunset because I wanted to see their calendar. And it does come up Sunset Middle School.
Okay, we'll work on that. We, we had that discussion the other day.
Yeah. Um, okay, lunch and training videos, we'll, I guess we can pass that. Unless anyone wants to stay here and watch the training videos.
What, you're moving?
So what's the grocery store school play about?
It's about a board member at the grocery store and the school play.
I, yeah, I'm fine.
Uh, no, we, we really, I think that the what if training was really, really similar.
I do, too.
I honestly, I was, I guess, a little overly ambitious thinking we might not make it till one o'clock. So I helped put in those training videos. Uh, presentation. So I was like, well, we'll wrap up the day, eating lunch and watching these training videos.
Maybe.
I have a question on a whole different thing.
Yep.
Is that okay? Move along from training videos. When, at the other board, first board meeting that I came to, I know I signed up to be on some committees. And I remember the policy committee, I'm not sure what else. Is this something we're going to talk about on Monday? What committees we signed up for and when they
They can tell you right now.
Yeah, I can tell you, it's posted on, on the website, but I also have it here.
And is that when, is that the special, special school board meetings are TBA, right?
Yes.
They're on the fourth Monday of the month typically.
We keep that fourth Monday just in case something
Comes up. So we never know if we're going to be needed at that meeting until
Oh.
Usually.
We will know a few of them. A few of them are designated data meetings.
I remember that.
And that is where, and that, that's also available on the website on our meeting schedule. It will say if it's a data meeting, that's when the schools will come and present their data.
And it'll just be a meeting where we sit here and look at data.
Yeah, maybe I only am on the policy committee.
No, you both
No, you're on a second one.
You have a school, too.
You're at Resource Link.
You are on Superintendent Evaluation Committee, maybe, and policy. And you are on the Licensed Evaluation Committee. And your representative school is Destinations, Resource Link and Little Pirates first.
Yeah.
That's all good.
Right, but how do I know when those other committees are going to meet?
As far as Superintendent Evaluation
And teacher.
The teacher evaluation committee is, is meets as needed.
Yeah, and they should send you an email.
The superintendent one will come up probably in the next month or so.
And then as far as, yeah, as far as superintendent, that's, that's for the committee members to decide.
And who chairs those committees?
Um, I don't know about the Licensed Evaluation Committee because I don't, I don't think we've done that. Like you said, it hasn't met in years. And superintendent, I, I would imagine you would have your first meeting and pick a chair. I don't know that there's, because it changes every year.
Somebody's got to organize the first meeting.
That's kind of what I'm trying to find out about. I just want to make sure I can do my, my duty and be there and
Um, well, you guys could determine right now because it's maybe Arnie and Addie are the three members on the Superintendent Evaluation Committee. So you can certainly elect a chair now and I'm happy to help reserve a role.
We can just talk about it all.
I have no, I have no problem nominating Addie as the chair. Would you like to be the chair?
Um, we don't have to do it now. I just want to make sure that I am
But now, knowing that it's the three of us will set something.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do that.
And I think, and I think one of the things that we do is, in, in the item you have the COSA OSBA Joint Evaluation Handbook, that's online now.
It is, it's, you can
We can just go there. That would be a good thing for us to review. That's the evaluation practice we're gonna use.
Yeah, well, so we'll, the three of us will figure out a run, we're meeting Alop and then all that.
Yeah, and who else should be on it?
Oh, you need more people, okay.
Potentially.
Not necessarily. Usually it's just the three of us.
Okay.
Okay, and then what about the Teacher Evaluation Licensing Committee? Uh, is that just board members or no?
No, it's, it's, it has four, four certified members. Four admin and a board member? It has, it has people from the licensed unit, from the administrative team and board. And the tentative meeting for that is the 22nd at 4:00 PM.
On September?
Yes. It's tentative.
They haven't met this online.
Yes.
And someone, someone's got to be voluntold to be in charge.
Um, it will be, yeah, we'll talk about it in the meeting.
Okay, again, I just want to make sure that I can do what I said I would.
Yeah, a similar question for administrative compensation. I already, I already met with Kevin for the facility, so I know, I know when and where those are happening. But administrative compensation is that one.
Let's finish that.
What's that?
Just finish.
Well, they, they did kind of a one-year mandate. Yeah, and so that, it won't be until like March, April, May.
You, you are the negotiating team for the board, you respect the administrators, and they have to come with a handbook and they do it. They don't have any negotiating
But usually, somebody will email him, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But not only that, just so you know, it's generally based off the other contracts that are
That's true.
That are negotiated with teaching staff and, and it usually just
In, in lieu of Marina being here, I will just speak out and say, it is not a negotiation Yes. I knew she would say that if she was here. So it is not a negotiation committee, but it is a discussion.
Yeah.
Because the administrators are not a bargaining unit. Finally, you have the final say on how.
Yeah. This is when he says, there's 128 other school districts out there.
They didn't say that.
Okay, is there any other issues that people want to bring up?
Oh, the two videos, can you put those online someplace on so that we can
I, I actually can't, they're proprietary, proprietary OSBA property. And Jen Nelson just gave me access for the day to use them. They're, they're very short, they're really similar to the scenarios.